Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. We will stand and do Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's finally Thursday. Jake, could you do roll call, please? I better stick to my day job, not singing.
Keesha, Johnner?
Here.
Jim Mueller?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for today's agenda.
I move we approve today's agenda?
I'll support.
McCombs?
Hi.
Mueller?
Hi.
Johnner?
Aye.
On to business. We are in Day Four. We have heard from all the departments. We appreciate you guys. I felt like so far, it's gone well. And I think the timeline has gone well. So what we're going to do now is we have some, what we consider wrap-up stuff and discussions as a board. We may not go exactly in order in which is on the sheet. So the first thing that I wanted to discuss is just a board and kind of just give an update is health insurance. I'm sure you department heads have received, we got great news. Lisa gave us good news that it was only a 2% increase versus in the past. So Board, at this time, we don't have the formal. We will receive that later from Lisa. But I would like the Board to consider that rate increase that we as a county, the county would take that portion of rate increase. And so there would be no rate increase to the employees. So that's what we're looking at. We will have a more formalized probably in February. So that's a positive, and I'm happy to do that. So. Then some of the things that I would like to go on to next is we've had some organizations reach out to us and ask us from requests. So one of those, we have HERDA that is in front of us. Board, currently, we do fund HERDA at $36,000. HERDA is making a request of $38,000 for FY '26. And I believe you have a letter on that. Jake, can you tell us just a little bit as a board where that $36,000 comes from?
Where it comes from?
Is it at Department 99? And is that fun, coming out of Fund One?
So just a second. So looks like Fund One, Department 99.
Steve, you sit on that board, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you want to weigh in on anything on that?
Well, I don't think it's an unreasonable request, 36 to 38. It's something we're required by law to provide. So I don't have a problem with it.
Do we know what the additional $2,000 is for?
Well, that would be for maintenance, probably for maintenance costs or the increase in maintenance costs.
Okay. And so make sure that, I also think it's important that we think of Marion County. We have a location here at Public Health that we house some HERDA, right? And then it's my understanding, we also have a location in Pella that they have HERDA too? Is that correct? Or is that a different?
Well, we have, we have a place in Pella that they just park their buses on.
Okay.
We used to park them at, what is that?
COC. Was it COC, Christian Opportunities?
Yeah, but they no longer want them there. So Nick's greenhouse graciously allowed us to park some vehicles there.
Okay. So we split those. So those vehicles are split in two locations to make it more feasible.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Jim, do you have any thoughts on this?
Of the total budget, how much is that, $38,000? Is that a, what, is there indication of, I mean, is that 10% of the budget? 5% of the budget? Or?
Of the whole budget?
Of the whole budget.
Oh, I see. Of HERDA's budget.
Of HERDA's budget.
Okay, good.
I mean, I, just to help put it in perspective, because I see it, I mean, $2,000, I get it. It's not, not that much, but it's still 5.6% when we're looking at everybody else's budget.
Yep.
We're not going to give anybody else 5.6%. So, and I'm not suggesting that HERDA doesn't provide a necessary and beneficial service. That's not it at all. There's a lot of things that we want to do but can't do. So I would say let's, I certainly don't have any issue with increasing it. I'm just a little bit cautious of the $2,000 increase when I know we're going to be squeezing everybody else in the room here shortly.
Well, I mean, is there a happy medium? Is there, do you want to keep it at 36? Do you want to try to go to 37? Any thoughts? Board?
Do we get any?
Do we want to?
Do we want to? Do we get any payback from them using any of the? And again, I'm just asking the questions because I've never, never been here in this chair before. So do we get any payback from them using the county facilities out at our location here in Knoxville?
No, we do not. We provide that space.
Yeah, no. They just use the facility.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we pay the heat and electrical and water and all the utilities are on us?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, they maybe have a little cocoon back there that they stay in. They don't actually, you know.
They don't, yeah, they don't come into that building per se. They just.
Only to use the restroom, I think. Yeah. Yeah, we build, we build a little room, inner room.
Sure.
Back there.
And again, I just want to be careful and say, I'm not making any comment on the validity or the value or anything. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, that was, and that was our way of helping them save money.
Sure.
You know, to put toward the transit system.
Yep.
I do think it is important that, it would be nice to know what their total budget is. I don't know if, I don't know how big of area they have, to be honest. I do know that we have to contribute. Some counties have significantly cut. I do know that. Mahaska County was one of those that is cut. But they have another.
We have another agency.
That they're using. So they're trying to, yeah, so it makes it, yeah. So I guess it's, I'm going to, you know, seek what you guys, if you want to leave it as is and then find out more information, you know.
Well, that's fine, Jim, if you want to find out what their total operating budget.
I would prefer to just leave as is, status quo, until we get more appropriated for more full disclosure of what the budgets are and what's not.
And I know they would be willing to come and talk to us about that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
At some time.
So the question is, if we're not allocating and telling Jake what we're wanting to fund this at, then so we either, we can make the line item at 38 or we can just leave it at 36, knowing that they may not get an increase this year. Does that make sense?
And so, again, new guy, we can budget 38 and fund 36. We don't have to allocate everything that's budgeted, correct?
That's correct. We have a couple different, in the budget process, you can set a budget that does not mean it has to be spent. There is also this appropriation step eventually down the road. Well, that's a discussion we can have at a later date of appropriating a certain amount. But we get a monthly invoice from HERDA for a certain amount. If the desire of the Board at this time isn't to change that amount, I mean, it's an invoice from them. You guys are direct control of paying that bill. We just administratively code it each month. So just because you budget that amount doesn't mean you have to increase the payments at the beginning of the year.
However, budgeting more than we expect to spend or tend to spend is not always a good thing either, because then we reduce elsewhere inappropriately where we could or should. I mean, I'd recommend at this point, in lieu of more information for next year, keep it the same.
Is that a motion?
I move we keep it at $36,000 for coming here.
All right, I'll second that.
Sorry, I apologize for getting in our process. So you're doing a motion on that?
Yep.
So I missed the motion, I'm sorry.
The motion is to fund it at the current rate? By 36,000, by Jim? Yep, and I second it.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Next item we have is, we received a letter from Family Crisis Center. This is something that I believe we've received a letter. We have never funded this at this point, or maybe we did in the past. It hasn't been current that I remember.
Crisis Center, yeah. Hasn't been for many years.
Yeah, okay.
Since they had a bunch of changes.
So I really don't know much more about that than that, but the request is $21,719. Currently, I am not in favor of funding this, but I want to hear your guys' opinion.
Well, my opinion is we're going to be struggling with our own budget. So I'm not in favor.
I agree completely with that.
All right, Jake, do you want us to just move on from that? Or do you want us to make a motion that we're not funding it?
Um, maybe a motion.
Okay, right. So I'll entertain a motion on Family Crisis Center. I'm not funding it.
I make a motion that we not fund that due to our other needs.
I'll support. McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Number, the third one we have here is the Humane Society. The Humane Society, currently, we funded county level at $18,000. The Humane Society has contacted us, sent us an email this week, Board, and regarding their wanting to pretty much double that. They're wanting, they're wanting an increase in their contract to $36,429. Says all towns in Marion County, which the exclusion of Pella who uses Van Wyk, that pays $3 a person for services. And she, this spreadsheet back. Anyways.
What was the increase? What did they ask?
They're asking for $36,000.
My opinion again is to look at what is their expense structure. I want to look at their budgets before I start writing checks. That just because everybody else pays a certain amount per person in the county, to me is irrelevant data. What service do they provide? How many animals do they care for? What do they do for us for the money? I'm sure they provide a great service and, and please don't read into that other than there's not enough information for me here to make an informed decision on whether to increase that or not. I certainly don't have a problem in keeping it where it was. But I feel uncomfortable in increasing it without specific data as to what, why that needs to increase versus everybody else does it, so you need to pay the same.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, sorry, Keesha. Is this the animal disposal? Okay, so that has to do with environmental health, right? So that's, no.
This is just.
Okay.
I guess I'm not sure. This is the, it's a monthly payment to the Humane Society to take animals, I guess that were from the, collected in the township. So I'm not sure if that's animal disposal or not.
So I also think that, Jim, when you're referencing that, I also think it's important to know where the animals are coming from. Are we, is Humane Society taking animals outside the county? Things like that. So I think that all that information would be good to know. So at this point, I'm in support of the just keeping it status quo. So. Do you have any thoughts on that, Steve?
No, that sounds good to me. I agree with everything everybody said as far as finding out more details.
All right, so I'm seeking a motion.
I move that we keep Humane Society's commitment to be the same as it was in prior years.
Second.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Hi.
The fourth item in that group is libraries. Board, you heard their presentation? I think, and regarding the library, it was, let's see, I don't know that we have a library tab? I can't.
Thirty, well, there is a libraries, it's some department, it's Department 33.
Is that it? Okay.
The budget amount was.
So currently in this budget, it is budgeted at $95,000. We have budgeted that for the last several years. Last year, we only awarded them $85,000. These numbers were distributed right here upon, these were numbers that the Board determined. So they have come up with their different formula. They have united, they have got their coalition. We know that currently, they all offer the same service. Other than Pella is not offering hoopla any longer. They do offer bridges. And yeah, that was taken, that was this past fall, summer, fall, when that all went that way. So wanting to hear your thoughts.
Those services are still provided at $85,000.
Correct. Yep, there is no, there is no.
I know we, I know we fund them above and beyond what we're required to. I can't remember what that number is. What was that number?
In the past, it's been, the code, statutory code, Jake, is roughly, it's under $70,000.
So I just pulled up the spreadsheet. So required funding is six and three quarters cents on your valuation. And if you just do the straight levy math, that is $62,485. And that comes up to 9.09. Okay, let me back up a little bit. That was last year's, I apologize. It's six and three quarters cents, and last year, that was $62,485.
And that's how the rural services fund, correct?
That's correct.
Which, which our levy rate has, went down.
The levy rate was reduced to the limitation, but there was still the, the 2.6, 2% growth.
Okay, so the six and three quarter cents for the levy rate is required for us to support the libraries in the county, correct?
I believe so.
And is there a requirement then put on the counties of what services they provide to the county for those funds?
Not that we're aware of.
So it's really only a one-way requirement?
It's a one-way requirement.
Other than, I will say, we in the past, we, okay, they oftentimes have their formula in the past and, and they had, in my eyes, they weren't necessarily a coalition. They were not getting, and they have unified. But I did change that up personally. I thought that, you know, and so I did take those funds and help, said to the Board, this is what I would like to see, and they adopted that. Now they've come with their base, is it 7,600? I'm trying to.
I think it was 7,500.
7,500, something like that, yeah. And then it's based on circulation. So Pella will receive the most because they have the highest circulation, which you would make sense because it's the largest library and has the most, you know, books and, you know, services provided. The one thing that I did go speak to the libraries, I did ask them to unify, and I do appreciate that they have unified. I, I think one of the struggles they have is this yo-yo. So they have asked for 95 because they feel like that allows them to continue on with their programming. Now, we as a Board asked them, are you going to change anything if we only fund you at 85? And they said, no. So what are you really getting for the $10,000? Well, they're going to say more programming, but you're not going to get hoopla from Pella. I would just like the Board to think about, we need to be consistent. If that makes sense. Because I did hear them from them, and I did understand when they said, it's hard to plan, it's hard to budget from year to year if we never know if it's going to go up, down, up, down. And I respect that, you know. There are some libraries across the state that, or counties, that fund the libraries at a much higher rate. And I think in the past, the Board has brought up how we have financially invested in their, three of the towns, the three, you know, largest towns, meeting Pella, Knoxville, and Pleasantville. And so that's kind of how it was justified last year, it went down, so. Do you have any thoughts?
Frankly, I don't, I mean, my personal opinion is, is I don't have any problem matching the budget that we had last year. I know that we didn't fund it fully last year, but to put it in the budget at 95 and that with the intention of paying out 95, I recognize that there's going to be some changes and things that might come down the pike on that. But I agree with them, and I understand that they need to be able to budget things and plan for things. And I think investing in data and ability to read and do all those things and supporting a library, I think is a very valuable investment in our communities, in our entire county. For those of us that pay attention to the educational systems and our ratings right now in the US educational system, we're falling way behind in math and reading. And not that libraries necessarily have a direct impact or a absolute positive impact, but it certainly provides an opportunity for more kids to do more things. I know my personal experience is, is I had a daughter, I have three daughters, and all three of them love to read. And they go to the library and utilize it extensively. And I would, no, living as a resident in Pella, that would always be available to me, no matter what. However, I would also want to make sure that we have that ability to make sure that the county residents will also be able to enjoy that ability. So I certainly don't have a problem, I don't know, quite frankly, I didn't, I can't put my fingers on the sheet that they sent. I don't know what their ask is this year to go back to 95? Or if they want it more than that?
They're, no, they're, they're asking for 95.
They're asking for 95.
I mean, we can get to their presentation if you want to. Their ask was 95, I just pulled it up here. So the ask was 95. And it was a $7,600 based each of the five. And then from there, it breaks out into the percentages at 85. And, you know, if, if the funding would go less, maybe the base would stay the same. And that's historically, if the funding was less than the ask, the base never changed. And then the percentages were just used with the remaining from the base. It's how it had been done previously.
Right. Yeah. And I'm okay with their formula. I honestly am, because I asked them to unify. And they have, and they've agreed to this formula. So, you know, that would be, it would be something that, you know, Jake would have to work with them when we approve. And then, you know, I don't know how, but they tell you the formula, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they use the formula that they presented to you. So the base would stay the same, whatever the total is, you subtract the base out of the total, and then you just use the percentages from there. So like Bussie is .3, Melcher 2.1, so we take that at the leftover from the base. So at whatever funding level you guys want.
I would hope that, and I have spoke with Tina at the Pella Library. I spoke to her last week after they presented. And I encouraged her to look at options, because I do think that it is difficult when rural citizens don't receive the same as what the city citizens. And I think she is honestly looking at that. We do know hoopla does cost quite a bit. It's a great service. I do know there's a lot of people that really enjoy it. But I get their cost too, so.
My only recommend, my only additional comment to that is increasing it to 10,000. I would hope that the Pella Library would also recognize that we're paying well above what's required for the counties and to seriously consider adding hoopla back into the county. Because quite frankly, we're paying 85 today. We're going up 11, almost 12%, and getting nothing extra for it that we don't have already today. So I would ask that, in recognition of this, that they look very strongly at adding that service back to the county.
Is anybody by chance, is the library on? Okay. Katie? Is Katie by chance on?
So if we want to fund it at 95 for this year, and if they don't change anything, we'll change it. We may drop it down next year.
The next year is open, is an open game for next year. Who knows what the future holds in that position? But I mean, I'm not threatening by any means. That's not my intent here. I'm just saying.
Solid point, it is, it's, 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 so. With that, I'll entertain a motion and what you want to do with the libraries. Where you want to fund them at.
I move that we fund the library at the request at $95,000.
I'll second.
We'll give us my ear to look at it.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
All right, the funding request completed with that. We're on to large projects. Board, that, we discussed a little bit about that in Department 99, large projects. We were looking at, with Jake, a piece of equipment. I'm trying to think what else in Department 99. We know that our, I wouldn't call this a large project, but we also know that our insurance, ICAP insurance is going to go up, just like everybody's insurance seems to have gone up significantly. Do we have anything else that is large project-wise that I am missing? Board, you know, we discussed a little bit yesterday about updating the job descriptions, you know, and salary study, and just touched on it very lightly. But I think it's something that we're, you're seeing, when you're seeing these departments present to us and we're seeing, you know, this fluctuation, I do think that is something we seriously need to consider, because it would give us that basis. It's much, it gives us something to grounded-wise, and then it's not something that we're just going off of what I would consider, you know, what they're giving us, right? I mean, not saying that what, it's not valid points. It's just, it gives a, it, it's maybe somewhat of an ease in operation for us. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie on that. And that is because it helps when we have departments and we have boards that are hiring at one level versus what others. It's something that, you know, if we were to invest in this, that then that would be, you know, presented and we could, we could kind of know what we're really looking at. We have talked about this about every year since I've been on the Board, right, Lisa? Lisa, when was the last time you got a quote? Do you remember?
I'm trying to pull it up as we speak. It's in my email. My computer froze. So back in 2020, it looks like July-ish, June, July, I was working with Baker Tilly.
And did they do both, or did they just do one?
I, I cannot remember. That's why I was trying to pull my emails up, and I'm.
That's okay.
It's.
I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, by the way. I'm putting Lisa on the spot.
Yeah. Stuck. I can see it, but I can't see the message. So I was thinking it was around 60, 70,000 back in 2020, roughly.
So, right? Take inflation in that.
And, oh, here we go.
While Lisa's looking for that, just because I happened to get a bill from Ailer's Cooning that Jake and I talked about on different things. You might check with them on, I think there may be some other counties that did salary studies in regards to all of the positions within those counties. So you might not have to reinvent the wheel, because they may already have another county that asked for it on the different positions within the county. So instead of doing something brand new, they may already have the historical data. Now, it's not exact to Marion County, but it might give you something to go off of. And the only reason I know that is I got a bill in regards to, it was like a $100 bill, and it was from Muscatine County where they did kind of a salary study on things over there. I mean, so just a thought while Lisa's looking for them.
I do know there's other counties around us that do, do use it. I mean, you know, and it has been beneficial to them, especially when you don't have a county manager. We're sitting here and we're trying to discuss, you know, in an open meeting, and we're listening to all of you. And, and you all have the right to request. I mean, you know, that's, that's what this is about. But this would help us, especially when we're knowing, you know, whether you're, you know, where your entry point is, where you may. You know, where your, where your entry point is, where you may top out at, you know, type of things like that. So Lisa, did you have any, okay.
It's 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 not a comparison to other counties as far as wages. It's it's what we're trying to figure out. Our own individual jobs and what, what they do and, yeah, okay.
And the worry is, and I think in the past has been, that we're gonna find out that some may be low, some may be high. And then what do we do with that, right? That's, that's the concern, right? But it's, it is, I'm seeing in the last what COVID did to us. Um and then now it seems like the market has kind of tightened up a little bit. But who knows? I mean, it it just constantly swings. I mean, you know, it's going one way to another. And this would be something that um in my mind, um it would be beneficial to be able to have that information. And it's something that, the hard part is, is that you have to keep it up. So if you do it, then you know, you gotta figure out, you gotta plan, cause in budget within the next, you know, most people I think do them in every like. Four to five, six years, somewhere in there, so.
Okay, so here's an email um from this, I worked with a Julie at Baker Tilly. And it was February of twenty twenty. It was a full scope study. So that includes job description development. Job evaluation for pay equity, a wage and benefit market comparison. And generation of a defensible industry competitive pay plan with implementation costing. Is what in was included in the whole package. Now I can't. I got that far, so.
Now we're on pins and needles.
That's okay. So Jake, if the board, I'm not saying we're gonna make this decision today, cause I think it's something we have to think about. That would be my suggestion anyways. If we were wanting to do something like that, where could that come out of in ninety-nine?
Um you have a few miscellaneous line items that are not directly tied to any budget. Um so it could come from one of those. Um you could do an amendment or you just not use it somewhere else within Department ninety-nine. And I mean, and most of ninety-nine is um. You know, targeted to a specific thing because it's, but there is some that is the county's flexibility. And there are a couple line items in there with, without a direct expected expense.
Okay. Do you think that they would have?
If you put it over a couple of years.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you. Okay, all right, okay.
I've, I don't have the actual quote. Um I have the hourly rates that 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 they're saying because. Obviously, they don't know how much time it's going to take and it, and I know we talked in length about. How many job descriptions it would be and so forth, so.
Yeah, it goes from that too, yeah, obviously.
So, I finally got it open.
All right.
And just as an example, um I can't, I can't think of the specific line item there is, but it's a, it's a sizable number that isn't directly tied. And then there's also a line item that um has only been used once over the last several years for the cleanup project. Or any potential cleanup projects. And so if that isn't used, you know, that is budget room. Sometimes you don't use one to use for another. I know if that gets used this, in twenty-six, it gets used in twenty-six, but.
So if you do the, if you do this wage study, how do you break down? If there's a wage increase set up to the department head and how do we, how do you fund that? I mean.
So sometimes.
We don't do a percentage, but you do it, do you do a lump sum of money that the department head then?
You stare, from my understanding, um and if I understand Mahaska, how, Mahaska County, how they have it going. Is they're stair stepping them. So each year then they would have to stair step them up a, you know, amount. And then on top of that, they would get their CPI, so.
So it'd be a, but be a line item budget thing instead of.
So you wouldn't, they would know, if we adopted, you know, what they suggest, right? And then they would know, okay, this is what we're looking at. And then those that would be, maybe, maybe we would have some that are overpaid. And then we would just, I, in my mind, you know, you're not gonna be just slashing somebody. I mean, you know, you've gotta then just consider, you know, what we're going, how we would handle that. So there is some unknowns. I don't know all the answers. I'm not gonna claim that I do.
Typically, I think what you see is you see a range that says, here's where you are, here's your top of scale.
Right, then I know the government does that, the VA does that.
And then once you get, once you're at the top of scale, unless you add responsibilities or move to a new position.
It's just CPI.
It's CPI, and that's it. You don't get any additional bump on top of that. Because you pay for the job. I mean, yeah, it's what they do.
It cleans things up for us.
Well, that's, I think it would for the department heads too, but. Interesting.
There's something to think about. Um and that's one of the reasons I wanted to talk about that and large projects.
So do we have an amount in large projects that right now is currently unassigned? Is that that fifty thousand that I saw up there? Is that not right?
So um there is a. I don't have mine. There is a miscellaneous line item.
Out of a hundred thousand?
I think it's a hundred thousand.
Okay, that really, we haven't identified what that's for yet.
Correct, and if if nothing happens throughout the year, it's just a pure flexibility for the county if something happens.
Do we have any for the prior year that hasn't been spent yet?
A prior year, a budget just. Oh, I I'm not aware that anything major has happened this year. I.
So there's probably the same amount out there in current year that's been unspent.
Right.
So that's where I was thinking maybe doing it over two budget cycles, which could be.
Yeah, depending on the length of, length of project, you might be making an initial payment in a fiscal year and a, and a, and a, when the product is finished in the second year. I would assume this would be a lengthy project. And then um, yeah, I mean, there's. There's a variety of ways you can do it. But I do think that there has, there is some flexibility in Department ninety-nine that has, is not being, has not been used yet this year. I don't think there's been very many emergency projects or building projects and like uh the. The cleanup is still sitting there. And so we get, we're six months in and hasn't been used. So that particular line item is there out of, and it's Fund One.
Could you guys think about this? Yep, you know, and then I'll, we'll bring it up in a board meeting and we'll just discuss some. And go from there and then we'll give directive, at least we can, you know.
And sometimes it's good to um get um some quotes or bids, so you guys actually have something to compare and look at, time, timeframes and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know.
So this is no promises. I wanna be very transparent. I'm trying to be transparent as possible. This is no promises. But we, I do see a need, okay? Um I just don't know what the cost is. And um, yeah, are we putting ourselves out there and saying, yeah, you know, yeah, we are. I mean, cause we, you don't know what could come of this. Um but I think it's time uh that it's, it's to be considered, so. I don't have anything else on large projects if you don't. I wanted to um talk next about lost. But I also know that Tyler has got some information for us. So Tyler, we're gonna talk about lost and then. Um do you have something that you can share with us or is that something that you're um kinda a little bit about Fund One, Fund Two? I I see you're having your computer over there. I just didn't know if you had something from. Okay, all right. Yeah. Well, I think it's good that we hear from Tyler and then we'll do lost, okay? Because he does have some significant um, you know, information regarding Fund Two.
Yeah, so my main concern was Fund Two and kind of the health of Fund Two. And I'll preface it by saying, my concern is. The road department usually is a million dollars a year out of Fund Two. And if that fund balance deteriorates, continues to deteriorate as rapidly as it's projected, then. That million dollars for the road department is then absorbed in the secondary road fund, uh which I do not want. Other departments also utilize Fund Two for their FICA hypers and health insurance and they would be in a similar situation. I mean, that in their own budget. So uh. So I did, I gave you. I gave you some numbers the other day that were old, a couple years old. So reprojecting the utilization based off the most up-to-date actuals for Fund Two. So this would be actual revenue received, actual expenditures used compared to the budgeted numbers. Uh we are still around eighty, in the five-year average, we are eighty-three point four percent. Of the budgeted expense used for Fund Two. So that makes a difference, you know, obviously when you're looking at the cash flow and the projected fund balances, that does. You 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 have to consider that, I guess. Um now, could a hundred percent be used? Yeah. Uh I can tell you, my Fund Two budget is tighter than it's ever been. There's not as much contingency coming from the road department. I don't know if other departments have done the same with their FICA hypers and health, but I, Lisa's getting me numbers and we're probably more accurate than we've ever been. So could that change?
Sure.
Similar, similarly, the percent of revenue realized is about the same as the numbers I gave you the other day. So about one and a half to two percent over the budgeted revenue. So we are still receiving more revenue. So if we, okay, yes, Jake has, we've pulled up the cash flow for Fund Two. So you can see my concern is this. Fund balance uh projection over the next, the current and next fiscal year. Then we are typically utilizing more per year because I think you mentioned earlier, the ICAP rates. Our health insurance has had some, some substantial increases in the last four years also. Raises obviously factor in here because of FICA hypers, et cetera. So um so I I just wanted to bring that to your attention because Fund Two is of importance to the road department, but I know really all the departments. So if if applying trends. If we apply the trends, it's healthier than it looks, but it is still a decreasing fund balance over the next couple of years. So in two to four years, eve- even applying trends, we could see it. What, oh, I think Jake would call an uncomfortably low fund balance or zero fund balance. If things continue as is or if we see a spike in health insurance again or something to that effect. So that's my concern. We're two to four years away from ha- not having a fund balance here with. If no changes are made today or next year, you know, it doesn't have to be made this year a change. But I just wanted to get it in front of you for consideration and maybe a phased implementation of. Lost supplement or levy changes could happen now, maybe not, up to you. But I just wanted to make you aware of where we're at and lobby for change because it is of importance to the secondary road fund.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And my, I can, sorry.
No, you're fine.
And if changes are made, there's likelihood that that has impact on Fund One, which. Doesn't necessarily affect the road department. We're not asking for any general fund money moving forward. But it has an effect on everybody else. However, projecting actuals forward there, it's much healthier than Fund Two, so.
Right, no, I appreciate that Tyler.
And then Keisha, you, yesterday afternoon, you mentioned to me Fund Eleven Two.
Yep.
I went back and revisited that. Typically, we've been at ninety-nine to a hun- ninety-nine and a half to a hundred percent of revenue and. Expense utilization for Fund Eleven. Um so that million dollar kinda uh stagnant million dollar fund balance we've carried forward. You know, maybe that isn't as comfortable as I stated yesterday, uh cause we're typically right at a hundred, hundred percent revenue and expense there. So. Like I stated yesterday, the Fund Twenty transfer from Fund Eleven is based off of the revenue change directly.
Okay.
Not a lot we can do there other than reducing the fund. Fund Twenty transfer, which then if House File seven eighteen continues to impact Marion County, we may get into statutory. Minimum issues if the le- if the transfer is reduced to Fund Twenty. So my question is, what are the other expenses there that are. Causing this? I don't know.
Okay. Um I do think it's something that we're gonna have to um definitely monitor. It comes back to, you know, if we have to in the future, I mean, are we, you know, do we look at lost, self-supplementing that too? You know, that splitting that fifty percent down quite a bit, but um so. I I feel like right now, we just, we we should monitor, my point is on um. Fund Eleven is to monitor it, but next year we may have to be doing something. Especially if it decreases again.
Just a couple of things, um for what it's worth, um Tyler's analysis on the trends, I mean, the trends are the trends. That's, that's how much we're using. You take the total and you see how much you use, those types of things. So he's exactly spot on. From um Fund Eleven here, um it has taken um more of a downturn. And the, yeah, the relationship to the revenue to the secondary road fund is, is kinda what it is. It may be something of this nature, i- this is a very limited use fund. Um it's only got certain aspects that we can pay out of it. And maybe, maybe one of the um. So m- maybe one of the uniform patrol services that's in Fund Eleven maybe needs to go back to the general fund. I mean, that would be, that would be a swing. I mean, those are, those. Yeah, but let's just say it's a hundred thousand. Okay, so I mean, that, though there is that type of flexibility, um you know, zoning has come online in Fund Two, or Fund Eleven a few years ago. Um so that is kinda what it is. Um so that is a little bit of flexibility you can have there. What Tyler said, does that have a direct relationship to the general fund? Yes. Uh the general fund is in a much stronger position financially. And and maybe that's an analysis that in a year or two, those can go back and forth. There's nothing saying that the county has to put any of that. Uniform Patrol Service into Fund Eleven.
Okay.
Or you could take all of the Uniform Patrol Service and put it into Eleven if it had it. A lot of counties weren't using this like we had been for years. And with House File seven eighteen and the, the general fund things, they were looking to make moves like that. But you do have that flexibility to potentially move one of those deputies or, and that's just an example I came up with in just now.
No, I appreciate that.
Right?
At the end of the current fiscal year, it may be a little more telling also.
Yep.
Uh because the FY twenty-five sh- is showing the biggest budgeted deficit to the fund balance that we've ever seen. Or a reduction to the fund balance. You know, if you go back historically, we're typically in the twenty to fifty thousand dollar net negative.
Right.
And now we're at a quarter million. So is that actually realized and why the big jump? So in, into June, maybe a lot more telling in Fund Eleven.
Okay.
And uh to Fund Two, um just again, all those analyses are right and it is getting, you know, that, that's a, that's a.
To me, we've.
That's, that's a pretty big thing, right? But I just wanna remind that this, some of that, the trends are the trends on how much we're using. But we, the county did reduce, I mean intentionally make a decision to try and reduce that fund balance. So if we're on year two, if 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 she scrolls up just or scrolls down whichever way, a little bit, this is year two of reducing that levy twenty cents. And it's year one of moving the local option sales tax around. So yes, that's definitely something we need to monitor. And those are getting to be some pretty big numbers. Um and the, it does help to know that, that, I can't remember the. The percentage is eighty-three, eighty-three percent of uses. So that, that's, that's encouraging, but it was an intentional burn down. But now it's time to, yeah, to, to, to start um reacting to that just a little bit.
So in regarding to that, in the past board, when we did our local option sales tax, um the second sheet um on your lost.
So it's right above, yep.
You'll see over on your right.
Yeah, I haven't got there yet. My number is there to.
So on to your right, um you know, statutorily, uh the, the way the ballot language reads, we, you know, fifty percent stays in lost fund. you know, fifty percent stays in lost fund and then fifty percent goes to property tax relief. So we had, um, put, been putting that fifty percent and just in general fund. We have done, um, variances in the past, uh, I think it was two years ago, we did more of a split, I believe.
Thirty twenty.
Yeah, thirty twenty. I think that it's time that we look at doing thirty twenty again. Um, so you know, you take roughly that eight, you know, half of that, so to your right, if you're looking at this, this is the number that Jake rounds, the one point six million, so half of that and, um, you know, you take the thirty percent to the general fund and twenty percent to, um, Fund Two. Thoughts Jake?
Um, they're both countywide funds, so I think that, um, uh, I mean, I think that fits the language.
And in the future, we may have to look at the rules supplemental too.
Yeah, I was gonna say the real supplemental levy is basically the only levy you have much control over or you can adjust. And as you can see, I mean, we are still always talking about taxes. Um, uh, so you can see there, if you would want, if you would want to, um, approach a levy change um, every five cents, um, this year would be a hundred and two thousand eight hundred and four dollars of tax dollars. That's addition, one oh two, one oh two eight oh four. So, um, again, I know the board never likes to, to, to do that, but to consider that, uh, we're rounding this, rounding this trend. This is the only one that you can actually increase your tax ask. Or decrease your tax acts, ask. There's still the val- valuation growth, so there's still the three percent valuation growth.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're asking total dollar less. But you have the ability to levy more, which generates more. And then that's spread out throughout the county, cause it's a countywide levy.
I guess going off of what Tyler said, does it make sense, you know, at the end of this year, the fiscal year, once where you're at to also kinda wait to see what they do at the capital? I mean, on their tax side of things, will that influence it at all or not, or? I mean, I'm just saying, you know, once you wait to kinda see how that all plays out, it might help you kinda know also, or.
Yeah, it's just hard to know when we're trying to publish.
Right.
We kinda have to set the, you know, the levies.
Right.
And yeah, I'm waiting for the property tax bill. Have you heard anything?
I haven't, but I, that's why I was just, I mean, it might even be worthwhile in the next few weeks to kinda see once.
We're sprinting off into the unknown. We've got a deadline.
Right.
So we gotta make a decision.
Yeah, I, I don't know what Jake's, you know, or Jake or Tyler's point or, but if you, if you kinda knew which direction they're leaning, it may help you make some decisions on your side also on where the best place to do it would be. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, we don't know what the future brings and Jason generally, um, the, the trend and I don't, I don't listen closely, but it's more crap, property tax relief and limitation than less.
Right. I tend to be somebody that's tries to play conservative, go with the known and don't count on the unknown.
Yeah, very good point, yep.
Does the earlier comment about the health insurance, does that, would, does that affect Fund Two more so then?
Yeah, it's, yeah, currently, yeah, what, what's in there, it's not, it's not a huge amount, but yeah, it'll, it'll affect a little bit.
The, yeah, the, the, I believe the, um, the good report will reduce the, the initial ask from version one from the departments. Uh, but if the county is willing to pick up the two percent and not put it to.
It's already put in here for the, so what we're seeing in this book is already set at the ten percent, so I would say that it should look a little better. That I, right, if that makes sense. Sorry, I, I, I see what you're asking. So yes, it's not gonna be worse, I guess.
The increase as stated, it's still better than the ten percent that was budgeted, right? Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, um, board, I, I wanna hear your thoughts. Um, I felt like doing, uh, splitting that between, uh, thirty to general fund and twenty to Fund Two, general supplemental is wise to do at this time.
And not do anything with the levy rate.
We can't do anything on the lost, that's just the lost. Oh, the levy rate, yes. Um, I, I think that we do need to, um,
Maybe I'm jumping.
Yeah, yeah, I am kinda, it's okay though, but I do think we're gonna have to look at that on Fund Two.
Yeah.
I certainly don't have a problem going under thirty twenty.
Yeah, I have no problem here, it makes sense. It makes pretty good sense at this time.
I mean, we can either do that or we can move people around from one fund to another, which, you know, you're ending up at the same deal, so.
And we may end up having to do a little bit of that too. If, if the Fund One stays a little, you know, um, at a higher balance, then we, we, that gives us that flexibility. So I would entertain a motion for Jake, um, to direct him in how we want to do lost. So the thirty percent general fund and twenty percent general supplemental.
Um, before the motion, just from, from practice here, what we'll do is we'll program that into the FY twenty-six budget. And when we get whatever changes are coming, um, we'll, um, show you all those and how it affects fund balances. That, um, we will then prepare a resolution, so when the formal budget is, um, considered in public hearing, that is one of the resolutions that comes with the formal budget. And it specifically says on there that thirty percent, twenty percent, and that directs the treasure, um, effective July one to change from fifty, the fifty percent to general fund at thirty twenty from July one. So that will be one of the resolutions for official, you'll see it again.
Don't need a, you don't.
Yeah, I, I, no, the motion now is great because that programs it and, but I'm just saying, it's kinda like elected official salaries are now in the code of Iowa as part of the budget adoption process. You have to do a separate resolution for whatever the salary set at. So hopefully today you're gonna, you'll get to that amount, so we can program it and do all of the things we need to do over the next month and a half. Um, but there will be another resolution coming that shows that as well.
Okay. So, yeah, yeah, I think Jim made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I meant.
Second.
Mueller?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Checking along, um, now I have on our list, um, raises. So, looking at, uh, we heard from all the department heads, I have, um, I did do a list as we went. Um, so if by chance some department head I missed, please let me know, but I don't believe I did. Um, so I would just like to kinda go along and then, uh, we'll take each one at a time. So, uh, road department, road department ask, um, overall budget, uh, was three percent for his salary ask. Um, I don't have an issue with that. I, um, I don't have an issue with his budget as a whole, um, you know, and those are things that, you know, we can look at, you know, there's budget, you know, budgeted items that if you have question of and then salary, so does anybody have any thoughts on um, approving the road department budget as is?
Uh, I have, I have no issues with the three percent. Or, or the budget add overall.
In lieu of a salary analysis of knowing what, uh, each job pays, I mean, I, we can all say, yep, three percent sounds good. But we all know if somebody's making, and, and again, I'm making facetious numbers up here. Somebody's making a half a million dollars, they're still gonna want three percent or five percent or whatever, so, I mean, we need to be mindful of that as well. We can't just, to Keisha's point the other day, we can't just keep layering more and more and more on top of each other. Simply because we're all good people and we wanna earn more money. Uh, unfortunately, in a leadership role, we're in a position where we have to pay to get a job done. Whether we, we like to like the people that are in there and, and we do, um, and we wanna pay them whatever it is that they want. But ultimately, we're responsible to the taxpayers to pay the appropriate amount, a fair amount to get that job done. And that's what we have to do, and that's again, why I am in full support of that wage survey, so that we know when we're presented with these kinda questions, does three percent sound good? Three percent of what is my, is my next question is, is the baseline appropriate? I don't know that based upon the information that I have. And I'm gonna say that for every single pay position out there, so, um, we're talking about the road department at the moment, but it really applies to every paid position in the county. Is we don't know if the baseline that we're paying right now for everybody, to the most part, is not reasonable. I've done some research for the electeds, so I kinda know where we are from a baseline perspective. But for everybody else, we're counting on you guys' expertise to make sure that you're bringing the appropriate information to the table and we're gonna follow your lead, cause you guys are the managers, you guys are the department heads, we count on you to get the job done. Um, so, uh, to say three percent sounds good in, without any additional information, I, I have nothing to say that I argue with that. I think the road department does an amazing job. Um, I think you do great. I think you offer an awful lot of additional things beyond what the scope of the original, you know, road department guys should be responsible for. So I certainly don't have a problem with three percent, um, and the budget as proposed. Again, I just wanna go on record as saying, we just need to make sure that we
Yep.
understand that we've got the baseline right before we start just tacking things on top of it.
I, I totally agree with you, Jim, and unfortunately, right now, we're not, we're kind of, we're kinda stuck with what we gotta deal with now.
And, um, Tyler has done quite a bit of studying on it, I will say that he has, he does do, he has a system, um, that, uh, he presents to us as a board and what each, each position makes. And so, um, that is, I mean, he does do a very thorough position on it, so. Yeah, okay.
And I won't do the same soapbox for every single department as we go through. That was a one-time deal, so, yeah, everybody can breathe a little.
So there would be no changes, what we're saying to you Tyler is, is that you wouldn't have to make any changes other than whatever, if you made the changes in the insurance.
I was gonna, that's, that's gonna be my question, are we?
Updating.
As departments, are we to go back and revise?
I think we can do it systematically on the health insurance, there will be some one-offs. I think, I'm speaking for Lindsay as she's the master of the worksheet back there and shaking her head. I think we can do it systematically. Understanding there may be some changes, uh, we would send a draft. Well, first of all, everybody can ac- uh, everybody should be able to access and see the worksheets, so maybe Lindsay.
Can't, I don't think they can make changes.
At this point, I don't believe any changes can be made unless you're an administrator of it. Um, but you should be able to see the worksheets, and if you can't, contact us or Lindsay or Drew, I guess. If you can't access the worksheet, but systematically, I think that can be done, and if there's one-offs, contact one of us. We'll communicate, and if, uh, just a number needs to be plugged in or something, but, and then eventually, next week, hopefully. Um, we'll also have paper updates, we'll s- put it on solutions and we'll send those drafts as well. We would never want a department not to be able to see what is finally programmed and make sure everybody makes, is on the same page. And then we try and balance to the worksheet also.
Are you gonna go into the worksheet and change it then?
Yes.
Once you get the.
This is the health insurance.
Once you get the, okay.
Once we, once we hear from you guys.
So just to be clear, if the, if the, the full one point nine four percent is being absorbed by the county, zero percent to the employee. So if we go back and revise our budget, we're taking last year's premiums, applying those at the same percentage of county share that we would have, and any increase is then just Fund Two.
Yeah.
Or for me, Fund Two, I assume most are using Fund Two for that.
So the systematic, I mean, this is where I don't wanna get.
How hard can it be?
Yeah, it, yeah, this is easy, right? Well, this is, so this is where, if we're gonna do it systematically, we have to work off of a budgeted number and we don't know how everybody budgeted. So Tyler has kinda made a shift to, to budgeting for actuals. Some departments maybe do families, and it makes a huge difference if it's two-person department versus a fam-. So if, from a systematic approach, we would only have the information of last year's budgeted amount times two percent. If last year's budgeted amount is grossly overestimated or underestimated, I guess we would need to know that, right? But, and, and the, at this point, Lindsay can do that systematically on the worksheet and we will then make sure from a health insurance standpoint, not the other, any other changes, w- we would follow that up on solutions.
Basically, so this year, there may be more family plans and it, that's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, some departments, some departments just, um, approach it a little different, right? They mean, they, and they may need to one-off, yeah.
Yeah, and Carla's saying that hers is underfunded, yeah.
So for everybody that just budgeted the blanket ten percent, I have already adjusted the numbers in the workbook to two percent. For anybody who did not budget just a straight ten percent increase, we've contacted them and will contact them again to ask what changes should be made, if that makes sense. Cause there are some people who are adding an employee or have less employees, and so their budgeted health insurance amount did not just go up that ten percent.
But the, but the issue is, is it's really not two percent to the county, cause we're absorbing the full amount of the increase. So the total increase, the total premium is ten percent, but if the county's gonna absorb it all, the county position might be four. See what I'm saying? Is that not right?
Oh, I see.
Because the, because the employee portion is zero.
You're just adjusting it, yeah, Fund Two comes, it comes out of, right?
Am I, am I not thinking of it right?
How about I solve, how about I solve the issue?
Do it.
Okay. HR will work with Lindsay.
Awesome.
And the budgets, we have the, we have the full numbers and what they will go to. And we will work with Lindsay and her, what she's already talked to the departments, and if there's issues, we'll contact the department head.
Cause yeah, I, ultimately, we want it to balance. We want, I want that sheet, so we're, we're updated.
Yeah, we, yes.
Yeah, yes, I want it to be active.
We, yeah, we will get them as close as we can, but obviously with fifty plus employees, there's gonna be ups and downs, individual, family.
And that's why it's considered a budget, right? Yeah, no, I get that, so, okay. All right. Um, onto next was sheriff. Um, sheriff had asked, um, for four percent overall for his, uh, his employees that are not tied to his salary. Jason, there is one thing I want us to make sure that we just keep a pulse on. I know that we spoke about that, that mental health deputy. I know that when we did that with Janay, you know, it was only for, what is it, three years, whatever. Um, come July, depending on what is that PCA or whoever's received that. We need, you know, figure out a way to get that funded. If not, we're looking at some challenges.
Understand, yep, I, I agree.
All right, um, board, I stated how I, I felt, um, you know, I, and, you know, on his behalf, he said the four percent. But I said I was a three, I just, I wanna hear from you guys, I don't, I don't, where you guys are at.
I'm all about fairness, I mean, quite frankly, and again, uh, maybe I will be back on that soapbox for just a moment. And that is, is in lieu of a wage survey study and not knowing where the baselines are for everybody and are we under or overpaid? If we said it's gonna be three percent for the road department, I'd say it needs to be three percent for everybody. Treat everybody the same, everybody fairly. Now again, let me, let me go back one more time and say, again, you guys are department heads, you guys are leaders, and if you wanna manipulate that three percent, we're gonna give you, and again, this is me going back to my private, my private industry experience, not government industry or government business. But typically what we've always done, or what I've always, my experience has been is, we'll give three percent of the total. How you guys divvy that up is totally up to you. If that three percent is ten thousand dollars and you wanna give one person eight and another person two, that's up to you. We will give you a dollar amount and it's up to you to determine who gets it and how much.
I don't disagree with that, Jim.
This doesn't pertain to the sheriff's office per se, but you do have some departments that are over budgeted on their salary lines.
Yeah.
Because of, I'm gonna pick on Kale, cause he's sitting there, um, you know, Steve, Steve. Like Steve, public health, so are you gonna go, I just want it, no, are you gonna go three percent off of what is the budgeted amount or the actual, what the, what they're currently making?
It's three percent over what?
To me, they're currently making.
Their planned increase was four percent, we're gonna go three. Of actual.
Of actual, so, so the budgets, it's not the budgeted number, it's what they're actually making today.
Yeah, I, I don't know, why, why wouldn't your budget? Yeah, I, I don't know why, why wouldn't your budget number, if you're gonna say that they're budgeting a four percent increase, why wouldn't it be four percent above actual?
I'm with you.
What is it?
I'm with you, but I.
She's just making sure.
I'm ac- I'm making sure that everybody hears the same information.
And I, and I appreciate that. I, clarity is one goal and transparency.
Right, budgeted and actual is not the same in some of the cases.
Okay.
Yeah, I can give you a pure example. We decreased our assistant position by ten thousand dollars in order to be able to. Bring up our director's position salary, so there's a vast difference between what is currently being paid. And what was in the budget.
Doing it by department. I get that, what you're saying.
And, yeah, and those, some of those positions that are changing their function and changing their designation. Those are one-offs and will. That's the, that's the two percent, ninety-eight percent of the other guys that we're talking about today or right now. So, and I'm sorry.
And sheriff, also you had some changes on, um. You, you had updated, so those would obviously need to be updated in the books.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, one just quick thing on, back to that on the budget side of it. So, once again, we're just going off of last year's, I mean, whatever. End, end of payroll for whether it be my department, Lisa's, Tyler's, anybody else. What the end of payroll was last, at the last fiscal year, there's a three percent increase. Of what that amount is. I think we're saying the same thing on.
You are, but like, so for instance, Tyler has went from forty-one employees to thirty-eight. You know what I mean? And he's now giving his employees three percent.
Of that thirty-eight is what you have, or what you're saying it's off of. Yeah, I know that's, it's just, it's a fluctuation, but it's, but the hard part.
Everybody kinda knows, do, should do the right thing. I mean, it's looking at your employees.
We're trying to be fair.
Yeah, I, I understand what, I understand what you're trying to do, but it also varies, you know, number of part-time employees, number of, I mean, there's a ton of. There's a ton of issues that come into play when you, and on that side. So I understand what you're, I understand what you're trying to get at. Three percent is what you're saying.
Yep.
Understand.
So three percent on the sheriff, is that what you guys are thinking?
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm looking at that whenever, and we only have two hundred thousand dollars worth of growth. I mean, we, how, you know. We have to continue the vital services or. That we provide to the taxpayers, so we gotta look out for their interests also besides our employees.
All things, yeah, okay, um.
Mention fixing those things that Jake and I, we talked about in our budget side of things, okay. That was the only other thing you had?
Um, HR, um, onto HR, HR was a three percent ask, um, no change, real change in our budget. I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
Onto the treasure, um, treasures is a little unique, um. If I understood it correctly, um, her employees. Not tied to her salaries. She wanted a thirty thousand dollar increase. Um, to be able to five thousand dollars per employee to pay them. This goes back to what we've all been saying. We don't know, we don't have a salary study. Um, I do know she has two employees that are below the forty-five thousand. And. It has caused a moral issue. I mean, it's, 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 it's causing, you know. We, she does have employees that are above the forty-five thousand dollar, um, pay raise. She also has in there that she wanted to, um, add a position. Uh, but she would not do that position and until, you know, she has it budgeted and then she would come to us to request. I asked her what her main focus would be and she said the pay increase. Um, for all of her employees. Um, Michaela and I have, have talked about this before. I, I do struggle a little bit just giving a blanket five thousand dollars to each because. That's a significant increase that, you know, e- even though her employees make less than what a person at a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's, it's still a significant increase. So I guess I wanna hear from you guys. Have you, have you thought about this on how we? Handle that? I mean, are you looking at maybe wanting to increase those, um, employees? From that, I think a lot of them, I think it's a newer person and then it would be a relatively, it's a new hire. Um, that would be, you know, right there at that forty thousand and they would be jumping them to forty-five.
Can I just add something to that? I, I just took the second floor. And did the clerk positions. If you're gonna do for one, I think you need to do for all. And, and I know you haven't got that far yet. But then are you saying the new incoming salary is forty-five and not forty?
Right, that's what, that's what I'm talking to.
Okay, and then. Don't forget then that that's three people in the recorder's office and one in the auditor's office. That's not making forty-five. And you have three in the treasurer's office, one in the assessor, one in the auditor, they're all making forty-seven to fifty-three. So if you add another five thousand to all of those individuals, now you're upping the bar even more. So I'm just giving you information on, on what I did, so I, I would like. I just wanna make that transparent that I pulled direct numbers and I just looked at where they worked and what they make. And that's the information, you can do whatever you want.
Michaela did, I mean, just because Michaela's not able to be here, she did talk about that very first year she took. Out some, I'm, I'm gonna call bleed positions that she had in her apartment, I don't remember, but. Uh, what, were they deputies?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I can't remember what, I didn't wanna call them by the wrong titles, but, um, so. Well, to me, we have two things. We have what we wanna do for salary and then what we're gonna do if we want to fund that extra position. Position that she, she's requesting. That to put in the budget. This is hard not having a salary state. This is where it makes this because. We have, you know. Couple departments that, you know, hire, um, directly at forty-five than it. And, and those people are looking at it as like, you know, well, I do, we do similar things and we have to deal with people too all the time and. It's just.
Are we, are we looking at getting somebody from a forty thousand dollar wage to something else? Is that what we're looking at?
So she wants to get, uh, she wants to increase e- every employee in her office five thousand dollars. So yes, some forty, so she's got two at forty thousand that would put them at forty-five and then she has some others that are anywhere from, I think. I don't know. Forty-seven, forty-eight. Yeah, so, so, you know, and honestly, I mean, those that are above the forty-five, I'm at a three percent.
Well, yeah, I.
You know, I just don't know what you wanna do because it's the ripple effect. Once we do that. Then, you know, because recorder has asked for the same thing and auditor has asked. Um, for Marissa too, and for, and I also get the forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, that's what we make, all right? I mean, I, and, and, and I'm just being frank, but I'm just saying, all right, I also know. That if you're gonna go, you know, it's somewhat difficult, inflation is, is hard.
And remember, we had fifty-two applications and seventy percent of them made. Less than forty-five, so this is still a great wage. To come to and work Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty, and it's not a factory.
And, and.
Just saying.
I think the other thing too that we need to also be mindful of is, and again, it's, you know, the quality of, of the work environment. I mean, you're not HVAC in the winter or in the summer. I mean, it's an in, inside job, right? And you're not out on the roads, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, and it's, uh, typically eight to five. Um, and, and, you know, quite frankly, the benefits are great. You know, look at what we're paying for health insurance as a county employee versus out in the market in the, in the private sector. It's significantly different out there of what percentage of your net pay or gross pay goes towards health insurance. So I don't think we can sugarcoat those things as well either. And again, uh, I'll, I'll circle back to my prior life is. We pay for, we pay to get the work done. We pay for the job. We don't pay necessarily for. We do pay for experience because you're, you know how to do the job, you know how to, but if somebody really wants a significant pay increase, they need to take on more responsibility.
Or apply for the other jobs.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we need to make sure that even those top pay of scale jobs are paying the appropriate amount for what they're doing. Not, you know, so otherwise, you're gonna just elevate everybody up to that top of scale job. For what they're doing today, and that's not gonna benefit anybody. So, I, I, I'm, I'm very resistant to two things. I'm resistant to a new position, knowing that. What we're facing from a budget standpoint, I, personally, I can't justify another job. For somebody that, you know what, I always look at that and say, in six months, if I have a economic or a budget downturn. Do I wanna call that person into the office and say, I'm sorry, but, you know, you're doing a great job, I like you, we can't afford to keep you. That, in the private sector, I've done that before and I don't ever wanna have to do that again. When you hire somebody, that is a commitment for the long term. Unless they're a temp employee and I get that, so. So I'm, I'm very resistant to add-on positions.
Okay.
This budget cycle, anywhere, any department. And bulk, uh, pay adjustments without some real justification of why are we doing it? And have some salary comparables that says, here's where they are and this is what is comparable across lines as to what it should be for a minimum. And I apologize if I feel, if you guys feel like I'm changing the rules on you guys as we're going through this, cause I'm really not. This is your first pass through with me and I'm. I only know what I know, so I'm gonna share it.
Is it such a thing that, you know, does this just push us to do the salary study? So then, you know. So then you have that figure. Uh, I think Michaela's fear is, is that there's departments, uh, there's counties around that are paying. Monroe County is paying, you know, their people at forty-five thousand. So she's afraid that she's gonna lose people. She has had some turnover. Um, but I don't know if that was because the job market was different in COVID, you know, and, um, things have tightened up. And so, um. Yeah, I mean, I. I, I understand the ask. I do get it. I. Is there a compromise? Can we look at moving those positions more towards like a forty-three? Thousand and then, you know, giving the others a three percent. I don't know, or forty-two, five, I don't. I mean, you know, um, if people don't, if you don't wanna take the two positions and get them to forty-five. Um, you know, because at three percent, I think they're forty thousand, five hundred or something.
I had that, it was like.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred and forty thousand, it's twelve hundred bucks, ain't it? At forty thousand.
So, uh.
Cause this is, this is the hard part, is that you've got people that are making seventy-five, eighty-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifteen, and they're getting three percent. And so. Right. So I get the ask, I understand, it's not the same. So that's where I, I struggle with. I guess if we do the forty-five, knowing that if we do a salary study, they may not get much increase.
And that's a great point because quite frankly, if, if, when, I won't say if, cause I'm a big proponent of the salary study is. We're gonna do a salary study and if somebody's in top scale. It is what it is.
Yep. So I am in favor of doing her two employees, getting them to forty-five. The others are three percent. No added new position. That's my thoughts.
Continued on the future salary study.
Right, well, it doesn't matter.
The contingency is next budget year. The contingency is next budget year.
Yeah, and they, uh.
I just, just a quick question, obviously, cause this is gonna come up. Um, so you're trying to get people to a minimum of forty-five is the discussion? So there's gonna be other offices or other places that are going to.
The second floor, yes.
I know, but I mean, there's gonna be other places that that's gonna come into play. I just want you, I mean, I'm good with it, I'm good with what you're doing because I think they all should be. You know, I just, I just wanna make sure.
Should do, Jason.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's.
It's compared.
I know, I'm, I know, but I'm just saying.
Positions, but yes.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just, I mean, you're gonna have that question asked.
Yep.
So I just wanna make sure that that's kinda what the discussion is.
Well, we're trying to rectify some of that.
Yeah, no, I understand. That, I'm, I'm clarifying what you're saying. I just, I'm trying to just ask the question because I know it's gonna be asked.
Right.
Somewhere else on, what is, what's the goal?
Right here, right now, it's gonna be even more uncomfortable if we wait to answer those questions.
Exactly, that's exactly right, I'm asking.
It was, it was, yeah, well, it, it's been a couple of years, but yes, I do have that, yeah, yeah, so. And I also have to think about this, okay? If she has the two deputy positions, it would be tied to her salary. So she could have had three.
But historically, those would make about probably what they're making, I would assume. I mean, you can't have.
Not if they're tied to her salary.
But you're gonna tie an office of what, eight? And you're gonna have four top people?
No, 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 I'm just saying she did have that and she.
But they, I, I. I know, but I don't think those deputies were tied to her salary like at eighty-five percent. When, when Denise, I'll, I'll go back to Denise.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't recall. Okay. So are you good with her two employees to forty-five? Um, three percent for the rest and no add, new added position?
I'll.
And we're, we're heavily looking at having to do something, right?
Oh, I, I, and again, I'm.
Salary study, I get it.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna lay this out there so that everybody knows what's, i- if we do this and say we're gonna bring everybody to forty-five at a minimum. We're gonna do it for everybody. And if we're not comfortable with doing that.
But we have to, okay, but this is the problem, is there is different classifications and who deals with public more and what certifications. So there is, we do have to think about that.
But then again, that's, that's that job study.
Right, but.
There's also other people too that you have to take into consideration that. Like for mine, my assistant, she's on call and. And if it's a snow day, she may be working. We may have three guys in a ditch. That are in work comp issues now, so we're working out, getting them, you know, there. You have reporting issues, um, like in the auditor's office. The gal that does payroll, I've done that, uh, you gotta make sure that you.
If she was here, she would be defending her.
And I'm not saying that her people are not defendable.
And in that case, you're on overtime or.
Right.
Extra, extra pay anyway.
But.
And she's not, yeah, she, cause salary.
I think you, you, last year it was forty and now in a year, you're gonna make the base forty-five. I just need to know where your base is. I mean, in one year, you went up five thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm supportive of Michaela's request. I mean, I just wanna make clear on that. I just, I'm just trying to get it all worked out because I, I'm supportive of what that is. And what Michaela's asking for. I just wanna make sure we have a good discussion or clarification on different things. I think they should make what she's asking. I think, I think this is where we always come back to, it's always tough for you three, when we always talk about the overall aspect of a budget. And we as electeds, and that Michaela's not here, so, and I'm not trying to talk for her, but I'll just, for mine. When there's the overall budget side of it, and I understand what you're trying to do, you know, on the, the three percent bucket. Per se of salaries or that side of it, but I, I think, I, 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 in a perfect world, I wish we could get to that point where. Each department had X amount of dollars on the overall budget side of it. And then if Michaela wanted to do this, it's up to Michaela. If Chris wanted to do something, it would be up to Chris. If somebody else did and we had that overall dollar amount at the sheriff's office, if you said. Sheriff, you, this year you get an increase of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Allocate it the way you want.
Allocate, if you need to buy cars, you buy cars. If you need to buy something else, I mean, and that's, and that's hard to do.
But then that gets back to this, because what happens is, is you take your bucket and you're like, well, this person, we're, really works hard and now we've. We've got this elevation.
Right, and that, and that's where we have to be able to explain that as department heads. Chris would have to explain it, Michaela would have to explain it. I would have to explain it because Jake, whoever, would ultimately have to explain why they did what. Right, and that, and that's where we have to be able to explain that as department heads. Chris would have to explain it, Michaela would have to explain it, I would have to explain it, because Jake, whoever, would ultimately have to explain why they did what they did. But overall, it's that budget amount that you're working with to decide. I mean, so.
Okay, so let's do this. We're going to pause on treasurer, auditor, and recorder. And we're going to keep moving forward, because, and then we're going to come back, and we're going to do them all three at once, okay?
Yep.
All right. Attorney. Now, something that the board needs to understand with the attorney. Is that the county attorney, the way the Code of Iowa reads, the county attorney can suggest to the board, as long as it's within his budget, what he pays his attorneys. Am I right?
Right.
Okay, so he has, and as long as it's within his budget. And that's for his attorney's salary, okay? He has suggested the six percent. I think he's stated that, you know, he's willing to, you know, maybe look at a line item. I don't know if it was the twenty thousand or part-time or something of that sort, to be able to pay for that. I had made the mention of his other employees at the three percent. Now, that's probably not going to be a popular decision, because he has a six percent and a three percent, but. I will say, we don't have much we can do differently per Code of Iowa on what he has for his attorney's salary. And some of them were three, some, you had one at a three, one at a five. I don't remember what your attorney's salaries were. Because you had, you've had a new attorney arrive, so you weren't going to, you know, give them quite as much, because.
That's right. Ross was set at a six percent raise.
Yeah.
Who's my deputy.
Yep.
Joy at a six percent raise to get her more in line with an attorney of her experience. And the three percent raises for our new hire Riley and our second most recent hire Bryce, who's been here for about two years. And the reason why I come up with those numbers is consistent with what I provided this board about what it takes to pay attorneys in this, in this county. And I see what the salaries are for attorneys. Your median salary for an attorney in Iowa is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I also understand, you know, the board's comments about benefits and things like that, but. Private attorneys. And taking into consideration the number of attorneys that we have in this county.
So are we strictly talking wages at this point, or are we just talking a little?
So, so we're looking at his budget and.
But not.
His salary, the salary increases, yes, we're looking at his budget, because I do know you asked about the twenty thousand that possibly could come out.
Right.
And that would clearly. That would fund his, his differences in his attorneys. So that's why he's saying he's willing to do that.
I know with all the continued certification and all the testing and all the stuff that has to go in with maintaining your licensing as a professional licensed individual to practice law or. Or medicine, or engineering, or whatever, they typically run at a higher. Increase rate to the standard. Guy like me. So I guess I'm suggesting that I would be okay with the overall budget less the twenty thousand dollars for the part-time, or for the. Whatever it is, part-time temp wages for criminal prosecution guy. That we have never spent before.
Are you looking at? What are you looking at? Their, his other employees?
Oh, the non-attorney employees? It'd be hard for me to do anything other than the three percent like we're doing. Until we get that wage survey and figure out what, what is it that people are doing, again. We're going to share the pain, because this is not comfortable for, for us either.
No, it's not. Go ahead, Jared.
I would just add that, you know, there are other employees, non-attorney employees, that have certifications as well, like our victim witness coordinator, who has professional license as well. So that's, that was taken into consideration in comparison with what other victim witness coordinators are being paid at this point. Especially with the experience that our victim witness coordinator has, I think that could be considered, and again, you know, these are legal secretaries as well. And I, I can't express enough the demand for these type of people out there.
I feel like I've talked a lot.
Hang on, I'm just, I'm doing some calculations.
Oh, there's three percent here in the. Yeah, they're full-time.
Just looking at. Just as a, and off, as these guys are working on other things. Again, from a private industry standard, I know that right now, dealing with people in, in the Des Moines market and, and surrounding areas. Typically, what people are budgeting or have budgeted for this current year is between two and a half and three percent. So I won't say that three percent is generous, but certainly from what we're hearing in the market. That's the top of what, and again, there are always exceptions, and I recognize that, but. We're not. We're trying to be responsible for everybody.
Right.
Yeah, to everybody.
Okay. So I guess, Board, I'm, I'm, I'm going to see what, what you're wanting to suggest to Jared. He's obviously willing to remove that position. Now, that covers, definitely covers all of his attorneys. You know, his attorney increases. Does it cover all salaries? No. But it does cover the attorneys. And, and I also don't want to get into this, well, if I, because that opens up another can of worms. Well, if I just go line item, then I can get it what I want, right, you know? But we do statutorily, we don't have much control over, as long as he's willing to decrease his budget to be able to cover for his attorney's salaries. So me, six percent, that's a done deal, okay? That's, that's what he's asked, or his attorney. It's not all six percent, but his attorney asked, the highest one is, is six percent. Now it's just what you want to pay the other clerical. He has three other, he has a victim witness coordinator and then two paralegals.
Well, unfortunately, I think I'm going to have to stick with the three percent also. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at for dollars and, and until we can get this study done. And then we have, and I know we always wonder about what's a, what's a comfortable fund balance. I mean, that's a struggle every year. And we may have to look at that fund balance pretty hard if we do this study and we start, we'll have to raise these salaries the next budget session.
I guess argue with that.
We have a motion? I guess we don't need a motion, sorry. I'm sorry.
Do it all at one.
Yeah, do it all at one, sorry. So, all right, so county attorney, six percent are the various, what he asked for his attorneys, and three percent for the staff. He's eliminating the position, the part-time position, twenty thousand. Public health, she had a four percent in the various, well. Public health, environmental health, I want to make sure, am I missing one? Okay, all right. She's asking for four percent. Board, she had one, she had one ask a six percent to get the grant coordinator to the same.
Not the same, just a little bit higher.
So, okay, yeah.
And also, if I can just point out really quick, we did absorb a position, so when I took the director role, I kept my old job and took on the director role as well. So I have leaned really heavily on our assistant director and our receptionist in the past month, and will continue to do so as we move forward.
I'm still at a three percent, just overall, you know, so. That's kind of how I'm looking at that, okay? So, but I don't know what, what the.
I can't disagree with that.
Overall, for environmental and public health, three percent, okay?
And again, we would absolutely tell you, we would love to be able to just say yes. Unfortunately, those aren't the cards for us.
This is, yeah, sorry. Okay, facilities, he asked for three percent, his budget overall wasn't much, there wasn't a significant change. He did ask to bring up two of his employees to forty thousand, so, correct?
Yes, so first off, on behalf of my department, because I have received some texts, we wanted to thank you. Because the two percent increase in health insurance that you're absorbing is a raise in and of itself. So the next statement I'm going to make, I hope you take as a encouragement, all right? I've been thinking about this all week. Most of my experience in the working years has been the military and the private sector. I've had way more years in that than I have had in county government, okay? I hear the word fair a lot. Fair is wonderful, what it's in regards to job descriptions. Fair across the board, just to encourage you with the salary study and thought process, is actually the enemy of morale. So there's no possible way you guys are ever going to be able to sit there and please everyone.
No, I know.
So I want to encourage you with thinking about things, the salary study will be great, thinking about things for job descriptions. That is probably the best and wisest thing you'll ever be able to do moving forward, because there are various levels of expertise required in every single department. And that's not uniform across the board. So just to encourage you, there's no way you're going to be able to make it fair across the board. That, that doesn't exist anywhere in the world. And we, if we all honestly think about that, we know that to be a true statement.
Right.
Life is not fair. That's just how it goes. So thank you for eating the two percent. And yes, to answer your question, what I was looking for was an additional eighteen hundred and fifty-one dollars that covers both of those employees, getting them to forty thousand. The additional thirty-six hundred and sixty-eight, which is the bulk of the increase that I asked for in that salary line, was to eat up overtime wages. We are increasingly at a position where most of our work and people that come early to the courthouse know it's two, three o'clock in the morning that we're working in offices. That also means our day-to-day operations, they, they still exist. So the additional thirty-six sixty-eight, which is the bulk of that increase, is literally for overtime, not for salary rates.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Any questions on that, Board?
No, no, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate it, Chris. Yeah, so facilities, three percent. I don't know what you want to do on the two one-offs, but. I think it's something that we have to be thankful of, thinking of, you know, when you, when you have different jobs and what they, you know, require, so. Very, very thankful of. Our, your staff that does, you know, take care of the grounds for us and, and does all that. But I guess overall, I'm still at just a three percent overall, so that's where I'm at, but you guys can, you know, weigh in.
So let me just ask a real quick question, especially about the overtime. So that is, so what we're including in our grand total budget is what their normal forty-hour per week is. Plus seventy-five hours where they're overtime, and that's what we're looking at here.
Yeah, we do not have a separate overtime line.
Which is something we probably.
We're probably, talking with Jake, maybe that's something we can institute, just so I can help better track that. You tell me, Jake, what's easiest?
Well, the salary comes out of the salary line.
Yeah.
I guess if you want to. Can we add an additional COA for overtime? I, I mean, I guess technically, we'd have to key it all, I mean, it's, we'd have to key it separately, track, I mean. Would prefer it stay salary line.
Right, okay. But knowing that that's not all pure salary, that's not a forty.
No, no, absolutely not. That's, that's not going to, I mean, as, as I stated in my budget presentation, four of my six employees are receiving a three percent raise.
Right.
So it's not that I'm taking that additional thirty-six sixty-eight and giving everybody a four and a half percent raise.
Right.
And the, I mean, whether it's used or not, I would much rather have that cushion there, just forecasting a lot of our projects that are taking place after hours, before hours, holidays, weekends, and things of that nature. It's better than coming back to you folks later on and going, hey, by the way, I need more money.
Yeah, got you. Thank you.
Any thoughts?
Well, these one-offs are hard.
Yes, they are.
How about this? I think we leave it at the three percent, and then we got to do the, the wage study.
Hundred percent good with that. I do have one question. If I wanted to decrease my salary out of the three percent, and I wanted to give that to my staff, if we're going to have sole discretion over salary funds, can I do that? And I don't mean that for any other reason. I'm happy to do that to get those ladies where they're at this year until a salary study's done. Is that something the board would support me doing?
I just have a quick question also, because I do work out of my office. If last year we were trying to get to the forty mark, and now you're talking about the forty-five mark. Wouldn't that kind of get his two people to where you were at last year? On, yeah, so he's a year behind on that whole discussion.
Yeah, we were too, and I also, but I also think we have to think about the classification and what they're dealing with.
No, I understand, I just.
Liability, I mean, because there is liability, you know, and that's not discrediting any, anybody's certain job, but.
And, and I understand the job description side. I can just tell you, I mean, cleaning my office, not my office, my office per se, but the sheriff's office, you know, building facility in general. I mean, they do a lot of work. I mean, that, that's not the cleanest environment at different times, and I'm not talking about my personal office, but the sheriff's office in general. So if it's an eighteen hundred dollar thing for his department.
Eighteen hundred dollars each?
No.
Split.
Okay.
I mean, I just, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to encourage that for Chris, because.
I guess that's up to you guys.
I don't, I don't have a problem taking that.
Are you, are you, are you taking it out of his salary, or are you just doing it?
I'm not one that likes to do that, because then you're creating an expectation for other departments that I don't. I mean, I absolutely, absolutely appreciate that. I've also had the same question in private, in private life.
As have I, and I've done it before in the private sector.
Doing that as well as, well, I have six weeks of vacation that I can never use. Can I give so-and-so two weeks of it? And the answer is no.
So to think about that, and I thought it was eighteen hundred each, sorry.
No, it's eighteen fifty-one and twenty cents, I believe, in combination of both of those employees.
Okay.
I, I don't have a problem taking everybody, that to a minimum. Are there anybody, anybody else in the county that's full-time and less than that?
I think his was the last department that he didn't, he didn't bring his up to forty last year, where everybody else did.
Yeah, I.
I'm good either way.
I'm okay going to forty of those guys, and just say, you know, we'll, we'll set that as the minimum standard.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much, Board. Thank you.
No problem. IT, he had. Okay, the assistant director position, he, in his budget was currently already added in. It's been in there. So he was overall, the ask was three percent. So not much change, and looking, you know, so. And then the GIS position was three percent, so.
Did we have, were we asking for a new position?
No, so what he wants to do is considering posting position that would be assistant director, and he already has some funding in there. No, so what he wants to do is considering, um, posting position that would be, um, assistant director, and he already has some funding in there. Already in there, he's just, he's looking at.
That would be maybe an in-house promotion.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
No, it has to be posted.
He was gonna add a body.
No, nope, yeah, every position has to be posted per the veterans preference, so, even if you were, if, if he wants to. Have an assistant, it's, it has to be posted, and everybody's welcome to apply for that position.
I could have sworn he was, he was asking to add a position, because we were looking at, the comment was made that we'd be able to put more desking in his current.
He, cause he has that, I was, he, I think it was the splitting of the offices of, he already has the position in.
Yeah, I think he should, I think he's just correct on the side of it, I think part of it is just trying to figure out when. God forbid, you know, if, if something was to happen or different things, on having somebody else that's that level. Of, you know, kind of understanding everything that's going on, I think that's the intent behind it, or whatever, and I don't, I don't want to speak for him.
Funded for two years, so if I.
Exactly.
So, your year-to-date actual is thirty thousand, we're asking for a budget of one forty-four.
But look, it's, see, it's right, it's had this budgeted.
It's been in there for.
Yeah, so he's had it, this, this budget cycle twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, so, and then so those are combined, so, yes.
So, there's three, three, I need an FTE count, I'd, I'd love to be able to, a body count.
It's on my list, I'm sorry.
Cause I, I mean, looking at the dollars is great, and it's wonderful, but I really need to, I mean.
There's Drew.
I, I think it's future planning, yeah.
Okay.
I'm on, okay, yeah, yeah, it's fine, okay, yeah, I don't think it's a, yeah.
Okay, if it's not an added person, then.
Not adding a person then?
Doesn't sound like it.
No, he's had it budgeted, the position, and he's had it, they, it's been put, this will be. FY twenty-six would be the third year that it's been in there, and he's hoping to act upon it then, because he wants to do.
But not this year.
But it's already budgeted, it's been budgeted for the last year, yes.
Physically, there will be one more person in the office than there is today.
Okay.
I, I think it's future planning, I mean, for.
If you look at the second line, there, he has his help desk, yeah, what?
It's an additional person.
It is an additional.
Okay, so he's got, Drew, explain this, I want to make sure, okay, you've got yourself. And then you've got, uh, an assistant, which would be a help desk person, and then you got a GIS help desk person, the GIS person comes out of the GIS budget. And then you have, you were wanting to, um. Post a position for the deputy, or assistant director IT position, and so that would come out of line item number. Part of it would come out of two, correct, and could come, some of it could come out of GIS, I don't know, I don't know how it works, but, um, it's already budgeted, correct?
Yes, so, pretty much what I was asking, um, cause a couple of years ago, Dehan put it in the budget to try to get a help desk person. But I'm also saying, um, pretty much some, for this assistant position, some of that bu, money would come out of that line item. So, in, in a way, yes, I'm asking for one more body, which is just gonna be a straight at, a straight, uh, help desk person. But also, that assistant position as well, to move someone up into that position, if that makes any sense.
But you're not gonna, yeah, I just want to make sure.
He's asking for a total of four, and he's.
So, so you've got.
And he's, and he's got three, he's got three, he's going to four.
Yeah, hoping one can move up.
And, and we would.
The new position.
And then take it out, and then advertise.
So, it's still, it's an unfilled position that had been unfilled for however, knows how long, but it is an add, because it's a, it's an add to the count, correct?
Last thing, just for, oops, just for me to add, because he does do a, or they all, they all do a heck of a lot for the sheriff's office. That whether it be going from three to four on the IT side of things in the county, or whatever, it's definitely a need. I mean, on, and I think that's why it was budgeted a few years ago, is to try to get to that point.
I'm not necessarily arguing that, I'm just, I just want clarity of, there's, there's a, there is a plus one headcount in here.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, yep. So, hopefully that answers any questions for you guys, so.
That answers it, thank you, thank you, Drew.
Yep.
Um, do we have any further questions on that, are you guys good with this budget, yeah, that presented?
Yep.
Uh, conservation, um, overall, uh, it was a five percent ask, is that correct, Kale? Yeah, but I'm talking about your salaries and.
It was five for the existing, and then the stair-step program for the new four, new employees. So, by code, the conservation board sets salaries for myself and the employees, so. I guess that lightens your burden to some degree, I need a total, you guys approved the bottom-line budget, we make it work, so.
I say, in the past, I know that we have, um. Stated what the salaries were gonna be, so I guess.
Separately, because I did confirm that last night. It's always been a separate motion, it's kind, that the conservation board establishes the salaries, because that's laid out in code.
Okay, so say that again, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand.
And Jake, Jake Schick has said maybe he can chime in more since I wasn't here, I'm just asking, I've asked what the previous. Way of doing it was, but, yep, but in code, the conservation board sets all salaries and everything like that, myself.
We set the budget, they set the pay.
Correct, right, so, it's that, that bottom number, it's the bottom number.
It's a block.
Yeah.
So, let me see here.
It, his board then submits. A letter to us what they're going to.
Yes.
What they're gonna do with the money.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I guess I'm lost in where you're going with your, um, are you getting your, where you're getting your three percent, I'm just trying to understand.
Total, the total tax increase is three percent, like thirty-three thousand? So, of that, we have a new health insurance plan, so that's twenty, well, with the ten percent, it was gonna be twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-three, or whatever it was supposed to be for families.
So, okay, right here, right here.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the packet that I gave you, the packet that I gave you, the front, the first three pages.
Yeah, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have the packet, I'm looking at this book.
Somebody's got one, right?
Sorry, I'm not trying to, I'm just, because I'm looking at this going, well, this is thirteen, this is, I mean, overall, that says, you see what I mean?
Yeah, and that's where, yep, so I had to re-shift stuff, so.
I am, I am completely, I just, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm just trying to understand the process, because, um. Clearly, you've got.
Yep, we got four new employees, conservation board's always in a four-year escalator, because we don't start on that, what the previous person was making.
No, 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 but I was looking at.
Let's, everybody, everybody, I think you're talking bottom line first.
Yeah, I'm talking about line, because I'm sitting here looking.
So, bottom line.
Bottom line, that's the bottom line, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at general fund, you know, what your ask is different there, and then we go, obviously.
I'm looking at thirteen percent.
Yeah, I'm looking, that's what I'm saying, I'm lost, I'm looking at thirteen.
You have to factor in the money that comes out of the reserve paid too, that's two hundred, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
He's looking all funds combined.
Yeah, and that's what you said, bottom line, right?
All funds combined.
Oh, so you're looking at fund one and two?
Yeah, that's, yep, again, I, I tried to copy the exact same format to keep it simple, obviously that wasn't the case, but, so. The total, we'll just get, the total tax increase was three percent, thirty-three thousand, and I forget the.
Thirty-two thousand, four forty-five.
Thirty-two, there you go.
Okay.
Now, if we can marry those numbers up to this number.
Just so we understand, and I want to make sure that we're transparent a little bit on this, if we do a salary study. Then that would be something that you would have to be.
Conservation Board would have to adopt, which we technically do every year, we review the salary survey, so we've already been doing that.
Okay, just so, a salary study that we have, that then we would say, okay, then we understand, it, it helps clean this up, right?
Assuming you're gonna do a resolution that it applies to public health and via everybody.
Yes, correct, yeah.
Probably, and I'm not gonna put Jared on the spot, but every board would ne, necessarily.
I think.
Approve it additionally, just to make it legal, and that's what I've done in the past at my previous county.
Yeah, okay, just so you're.
Yeah, yep, yeah, yeah, so.
I think this is the number.
This is what you're looking at, okay, alright, I see what you're saying.
The bottom, yes, the bottom line, because that's what I have to have a, yes.
Jake, as long as you can reconcile this number to this number.
And I'll be the first one to say, I tried to keep it the same, I don't.
I think.
Next year, I'm.
I think next year is gonna be a little bit more of a Kale and Kale-directed budget, the, the practice of the tax ask and all three funds combined.
Yeah.
Was just how it has been done in the past, it also included the budget package, that was a number not to exceed, and then the, the conservation board would go back and set salaries. Um, necessarily, the, the county wouldn't change what was in those individual line items, they may or may not have been exactly what was, um. Per line item for that, but the, the conservation board has always set those amounts, you give them a bottom line, the tax ask is between all three funds, and maybe that can be. Kale's gonna have a year now, and not, and not building cabins to.
Yeah, that was, I was trying to follow suit, and maybe previous to at least two of them, three of you would.
There's nothing that doesn't.
Failure with the packet.
There's nothing that's not.
Packet is cool, but it's not, it's just, yeah.
It's a confusing breakdown, because conservation boards are different than everybody else, so, yep, I get it.
So, okay, so three percent is what his, is overall on his budget. But that, I mean, I don't know how you guys want to handle that, so, so that's just, that's, but overall is three percent, so that's another thing that when we look at that. Um, there's some budgets that didn't go that high, right, you know, there's some that did, so.
And again, the big part of that, the way the breakdown was, was a new insurance plan that we didn't have before, so.
And a lot of road repair.
And a lot of road repair.
Personally, I don't have a problem with, because we've had a lot of different maintenance on some of those roads and things that, I mean, quite frankly, people stopped visiting, uh, we got a lot bigger problem.
So, okay, so you guys are good with this?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, alright, yeah, you need a break, sorry, I'm just going along, okay.
Uh, I moved, we take a ten-minute break.
Second.
Everybody's whole line is like.
Uh, Johnr.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Entertain a motion to reconvene?
I moved.
Second.
Johnr. McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller. Hi.
Thank you for, everyone, um, took a little bit of break, back at it, um, going, looking at departments, uh, so, the next one I have is, um, veterans affairs. You remember, um. Yesterday, they spoke about, oh, really, it's, um, he's asking for an increase, but really, it's overall budget is not increasing, because. Um, he doesn't take anything from, uh, or, or health insurance, so. I mean, I, I get, I mean, he, he has done a really good job, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, I mean. My other, my other job deals with veterans, and I have, you know, I get compliments that Rob does a really good job, so, um. So, with that, uh, board, how do you feel, he would be going from forty-nine, fifty thousand to fifty, right, at fifty-five? No increase, um.
Who's asking, is that what his ten percent?
Yeah, he is, yeah, but there's overall, then he has a decrease in his, and.
He doesn't like any of the benefits, so, 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 I guess if you look at him in those, I, I mean, just. To put it in perspective, there are no benefits associated with his payroll, so it's a little bit different. Now that I want to start that whole discussion out.
And I don't, I mean, and it's not gonna be, you know, you can't do that every year, I mean, that's one thing that, you know, you use this card once, I mean, you know, you only have, you know, so.
I'm okay with the veterans affair budget.
Uh, economic development, um, on to that, uh, so, um, Carla had, uh, presented the budget, um, there is a change in the budget, because. It's not so much increase-decrease type situation, it's positions in which we're looking at, uh, because I don't think she, the overall budget did not increase much.
Yeah, it's just, part of it's fund two, and my mis-budgeting this year of assuming that both positions would be single plans. And so what I've budgeted for next year is both at family plans, and so the biggest increase is in that fund two for health insurance. Which, again, because I did ten percent instead of the two percent, is even higher.
Um, Ms. Carla, the, the amount that you put in there, obviously, um, that would be up to those amounts, I don't know that those. Um, that's something that, I guess, as a board, that we need to be thinking about, even though you budget it, does it mean that you would hire at that exact amount?
Well, the director would be your choice.
Right, I know, yep, yep.
And the tourism and talent coordinator position would be the director's choice.
Correct, yep, and so, you know, thinking about what we have hired, um, other positions now, is, is it exact, I mean, no, it's not, because there is a little bit difference.
Yeah, with, with all the IT that's required for the tourism and talent person.
So, um, it, that would be a max, I guess, to me and my, you know, my, that would be something that whoever the next director would be, then we would have to discuss and kind of have more parameters of what we're looking at, so. Board, what's your thoughts?
I can't remember all my names, sorry.
It was up to, it, it really hurt, her general fund was less than one percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with where it is, for some reason, I, in my mind, I was thinking that we were adding a.
We're changing a position, we're restructuring.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're not actually adding a body.
No, you're not adding a person, you're changing a title.
Okay.
So, you're going from a director, assistant director, to a director, tourism and talent marketing coordinator.
I don't have any.
I was thinking somewhere along the line, we gotta ask from, from, marketing person.
That, that is a tourism and talent marketing person, so we're just dividing the job responsibilities differently, and that's why we're upping the one, and we're decreasing the other salary, because we're, we're. Changing the responsibilities of those positions.
Yep.
I don't have a problem.
Jim, please.
Nope, I'm good.
Alright, uh, zoning, um, she had asked, um.
I guess there would be an update, because I put ten percent in for insurance increase, so my budget decreased by more than three point four percent, um, if you take out, yeah, whatever that.
Yeah, I think, I think all the health insurances are gonna get adjusted, so that's kind of an outside.
Mine was a decrease, um.
Yeah, um, let's see, Missy had asked, um, for a five percent salary increase. Going from seventy-one, two to seventy-four, seven sixty.
And that was probably on my recommendation, because earlier in the year, you know, I was, be, before I knew all the numbers, so.
In order to be standard.
That's the hard part, yeah, until we do the studies.
Until we get the study, I think we need to.
I honestly welcome the salary study, I think it will help those of us who are longevity employees, who have settled for the one, two, and three percent for twenty-plus years.
Yep, yep, we'll bring it up, bring it up to perspective.
We may find out that we can hardly afford it, but we'll at least know, and we'll have the study, right? Okay.
Well, and you don't necessarily.
So, maybe you'll have to change that to, so back to a three, okay? Okay, now we are back to the, the second floor, just gonna call it the second floor, alright, um. We have the treasurer, the auditor, and the recorder, um, we had discussion a little bit about the treasurer, um, we didn't make any decisions there, since I said, let's go ahead and talk. But, hang on, Michaela, just a minute, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about the auditor. The auditor's big ask was, number one ask, was getting that one employee up to forty-five thousand. Yeah, I understand his ask, I do think, um, Marissa is more than qualified, I think, I'm just gonna be frank, Jake doesn't ask for much. Um, and when Jake asks for something, there's generally a very good reason behind it, um. And we're talking here like Jake's not here, because, you know, sometimes, you know, Jake doesn't like to do these things, but, um, I, I get it, um. I guess I, if we were to move, um, Marissa up, um, board, how do you feel about giving the others, the other two people, like the three percent? So. Because they have. Because they have, he has one that's. Marissa's. In that department with Marissa and then, well, ob- obviously, they're all under auditor, but, yeah. So.
I understand the ask for Marissa was forty-five, the other two, were they three percent, Jake?
They're five percent.
Five percent.
This is too.
Ours are a little bit, ours are a little bit, so ours are a little bit split between, we have two funds, so we divide it between election and administrative.
There's my issue.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the third piece was the flexibility of another person, so that's, I mean, that's, that also is shown in there, so if you're trying to compare to last year, that's why.
Well, this puts us back in the same position that we're going to be with the other department.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I, I, I just have to speak up here, you know, and I realize. With Tyler and I, and I don't mean to speak for Tyler, I'll just speak for the sheriff's office. I have fifty-some employees or whatever, and I realize a three percent to a four percent, that's a huge dollar amount difference on different things, but. Trying to shout out for some of the smaller departments, it's not near. I mean, I would have been thrilled, I do, I think my employees need four percent, would have been thrilled to get that. But I I guess I would ask on that saving side of it, that you look at some of the smaller one, two, three person departments, you know? Um, I'm not, I guess I'm saying that, you know, three percent is three percent, but. It's not near the dollar amount difference when, the overall picture, when you're looking at some of the smaller ones, I mean. And like Chris said, on the fairness side of it, I'm, yeah, we, until we have those job studies done, I mean. It's it's hard for you, but I know there's a, I know there's a lot bigger impact on my office than there is an office of three or four people.
Except for that person sitting in that one position that says, well, how come they got?
What I said?
Yep, no. And 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 I appreciate you saying that, Jason.
I, I, it's not that I don't think they're important, and it's not that I don't think they need more.
I appreciate that, too.
I I just, I mean, I I definitely, I know for three people sitting in that spot. That I I I will fight for my employees, I I appreciate in the past years on kind of what's been done on different things. But when you look at fifty-some employees versus a few other employees, you know, it's it's a different ballgame. I mean, and so.
And 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 it's also the other thirty thousand people out there.
Yeah, yeah. And and I spoke, and I, and I spoke up for IT, I'll speak up for Jay, I mean, it's like, they do a lot for my office also. I mean, on on claims and budgets and everything else.
Jason, I can absolutely appreciate those comments. However, your perspective is one department. Somebody else's is five people. Our perspective is a hundred and ninety, or however many employees we have, so. I mean, we, yes, that difference between three and four and twelve percent is a big number when you roll it up to a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety people. So I, I get it, but.
Yeah.
And and I've heard the comments of, you know, three percent on forty thousand is a lot different than three percent on a hundred thousand. Totally agree with that, I'm, I was a math guy, I understand those things, but. Again, we have to apply the rules, or try to apply them equally.
I would just say that, um. All the other departments, and I'm gonna pick on Carla, and I'm gonna pick on Missy, and I'm gonna pick on myself. I think that act, that extra person is for succession planning. And needed. You know, the. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, that's what the three of us have been. Whether it's this, the person that's in our assistant position, if they take over. They may not want it, but at least they can keep the department running while you make that decision. So I think some of that, for him is, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake, and I know you don't like. Uh, but is succession planning?
Correct, yep.
To transfer the knowledge that, that those two have. Takes time. So that's just my two cents.
And, yeah, yeah. I'm it.
I certainly couldn't do any of your guys' jobs. Not very well, anyway.
So when we look at this, and so we can just play it as a, a, a playing field, because we're looking at, we've got asks of similar, so you've got one department. That's asking, you know, for one employee that's up to forty-five. We've got Michaela, she needs two that are considering, um, she's asked for more for the others, um. And then we got the recorder, yep, and she's got three. That, they're not as big a significant increase, because, uh, could you please take to the mic and tell us roughly what your, yours are?
Um, so I have three clerks, um, one is, um, at forty, one's at forty-one, and one's at forty-two. So to get them to forty-five, it would not be a significant increase.
Um, Michaela's two, I believe, are just right at forty or a little over forty. Yeah. So.
So you, so your, your, your thought is to get those people to forty-five?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, to that ballpark, yes.
Yes. And it's right, yeah, right at the ballpark, it's not like.
Yeah.
It would be just below.
Yep.
Forty-five, yep.
Hi, Michaela, you're here.
Good morning, yes, sorry, I missed.
Your nose, you know, we were talking about you earlier.
Yeah, sorry, I missed comments that were made earlier, um. So, yes, I have two that are at that bottom forty thousand or right at like forty thousand five hundred, maybe.
Cool, yeah.
So, and everybody else is kind of between, say, forty-five and forty-seven, forty-five and forty-eight. You know, one of those people has been there almost ten years, uh, started out in motor, motor vehicles, was fully trained in that. Switched to driver's license, is fully trained in driver's license, she's currently my senior driver's license examiner. Um, you know, Keisha, I think you are aware of what goes into driver, uh, fitness and safety. And the medical re-exams and recalls and drive exams, there's a lot to it.
So, Michaela, we had, while you were gone, we were talking about how the difficulty this is and not knowing.
Absolutely.
A salary study or whatever. I'm, I'm just gonna say this so that we can move on. I feel like getting, um, those. Three in, uh, recorders, two in your office, and one in his office, getting them to forty-five. The others, three percent, that's my thoughts. Okay, till we can get, uh, a, some sort of a salary type study and, uh, see where we can go from there, so. And no new, new pos- position on your end, so.
Well, and, you know, I, I did put that position in as contingent.
Yep, nope.
You know, that was not something that I was banking on, and, you know, basically, if I had to fight for something, it would be more the, the salaries for the people that are there and that are doing the work versus adding the new employee.
I appreciate that, Michaela.
And I agree with that approach.
And it's okay, if you don't agree with that, I just feel like, I I understand exactly where you're going from.
We have to make. Have to move forward with something.
Yep.
And as. Difficult as it is for everybody in a situation like this, I, I'll. I will agree. To take those to forty-five. Um, I would be curious, I mean, people are gonna be asking, so we might as well get it out here on the table. How many others are out there that are under forty-five?
I, thank you for asking, because.
And these are, I'm looking at these positions, I'm just gonna be frank to you, I'm, I'm looking at just these.
But, but you, you have.
At, at raising all these other people to this at this point, because we're looking at second floor.
But, why, okay, but listen to me, though, you're saying morale, and morale on second floor.
I understand.
Is different than the rest of the county, but let me just ask a question. She has one person that she wanted to bring to forty-five, that's it. So, are you gonna allow her to bring her person to forty-five? That, that was, that was all her ask. A different person, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And she, and 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 we kind of discussed that a little bit about how you were gonna do, you know, maybe.
I'm just saying, fair is fair.
This, yes, but the problem, this is where some of the problem is, okay? Is when we look at second floor. We are looking at what these, what their, um, job, to me, what their job is, okay? And so I don't fully know what, what the position, other than I'm assuming it's one that's the secretary. Um, and then I don't know what the other position is, so, but. I, guys, and this is, this is the hard part, and I'm just gonna be frank. Last year, we give the sheriff's department eight percent, okay? There is gonna be some of this, the year before that was the road department is six percent, there is gonna be some of this. Alright, it's, it's gonna be tough, so.
And, and I wanna say, I wanna say to Keisha, just really quick.
Let me, let.
Stop.
No, I wanna thank you, no, I just wanna say thank you, because last year. You gave Renee ten percent, and I promised you that if you gave her that ten percent, that I would stick to what you wanted this year, and I did. So I just wanna say I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
I do, that's all I want to say, is that. I, I, I appreciate that, and I followed the rules and did three percent. That's all I wanna say.
And just, and just put one last thing in perspective is, fair is not always equal. Sometimes fairies, a hundred versus eighty, it doesn't always have to be a hundred to a hundred. Fair is not always equal.
So those departments, if you could, please, um, make those changes on that.
I got something to.
Okay.
If we do this salary study, and these forty-five thousand dollar year salaries wanna get being forty-three, forty-two, what happens then?
That's what they said earlier, is that there will probably be stagnant for a few years until the CPI catches it up.
Okay.
Okay, uh. I believe we are done with departments now, it's, uh, what, who do I left, am I missing somebody? Yeah, we got.
I thought, I was ready to adjourn.
Yeah, yeah, no, we gotta do comp board.
And levy rates.
And levy rates. I don't think levy rates would be terribly hard. So, comp board. If you could, please bring up that sheet.
Where are we going? Sorry, I wasn't. Where are we headed to, Keisha?
Comp board.
Oh.
Okay. Um, so the compensation board, um, give us their recommendation. And, uh, again, appreciate the, the recommendation. We now can, uh, the unique part about compensation board is that we can take them by each, and actually, I think we end up having to do. Something special with each one, so like, you have to take each one and then determine, so. And I don't know if that's a resolution at the end point, or if we have to do something special on that, or.
Well, there will be a resolution, um, if you're asking about procedure.
Yep.
There is a, will be a separate resolution when you ultimately consider the budget, which is in April. Um, the budget needs to know. Effectively, you're, um, gonna, I hope, pass a motion at a final determination of what these are, that has, will have their effect. Uh, throughout budgets, if there's adjustments needed or not. And then that's what we'll move forward to get to the draft, uh. To create the budget that will start the House File seven eighteen mailing and all those, so the anticipation is a motion today. Could not go higher.
Yep.
Technically, it could go lower, um, but is, is it?
Yeah.
I mean, we, because we can do the seven eighteen at, at, that, that's a max not to exceed, is what it's saying.
Yep.
And then the budget actually could be higher, but the assumption is that this is kind of your, your decision. But there will be a resolution with your final numbers coming again when you ultimately consider the budget.
Okay. Um. I'm gonna take us first, supervisors. Just gonna be frank, I put in three percent, I did do the budget, um, I didn't take, uh, to forty-eight, um, thousand. I, uh, took us. Sorry, I'm gonna bring it up. It's right here. Well, we're divided out, so, I mean, it's a total, so just three percent, so one thirty-seven, eight forty-seven, you know, you roughly divide that by. Um, add, added the three percent, and then there's a fifteen-hundred stipend in there for the, um, chair, which we've had that.
That must be why my salary is lower than what is on the list.
I don't know if you're looking at your form correctly, but, um, anyways, yes, so that's.
I'm saying twenty, I'm saying twenty percent, Jake.
Keisha did your budget.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna, I did, I did do it, I, I'm taking it upon myself, so. Um, I wasn't gonna give myself more than what we were asking, just the general stuff. So that's, that's my thought process on it. And we can, if you, if we want, no, um, we don't wanna increase it at all, we can. Do that, but, uh.
Well, we've done that before.
Yep, yeah.
My perspective is, let's lead the charge, supervisors are zero. I'm not doing this for the money.
I'm okay with that.
No, that's fine. So.
So zero salary?
Way to take it.
Ooh. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, sorry, figured the mood, it's the mood of the moment, so, alright, so, I mean.
Right.
Yes?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, zero, zero increase, yep. Um, and then, are you okay with the fifteen hundred, one twenty-five per month stipend?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
There's extra, hey, Nick.
Alright, um, county attorney. County attorney, um, requested, uh, six percent, is that correct, Jared, just wanna make sure, yep.
Well, he didn't.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, the board.
Yeah, yes. The compensation board suggested six percent increase.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Um. So. I. I'm just gonna be honest, I think that what he asked for, um, wasn't unreasonable. I know how hard it is to get a county attorney, and if we're without a county attorney, we're in trouble. Um, it, it's, it's, it's difficult, so, I'm just.
That good, well, that goes back to my thoughts originally before we, you know, a couple of months ago, I was in the five and six percent range for everything, but. I'm okay with that.
And he does have his, uh. Deputy, it's not, I don't know if it's quite at eighty-five.
Seventy-nine point seven.
Okay, yep, so not quite, so.
It's, the only trouble is if we were to approve everything at the, at the recommendation rate, it would eat up all the growth. That we've, that we've realized as a county.
It does, yep.
I value the, uh, everything that the county attorney does and all of the electeds, uh, so please don't misunderstand where, where, all of you guys are gonna hear this, because this is gonna be a. A constant theme of going through, and that is, is, I went through and. ISAC has a wonderful tool out there where they can, you can look at the salary survey by elected positions throughout the entire state. And one of the things that I always look at, being a numbers guy, is where do we, where do we fit? For our size of our county, our population of our county versus what we're paying our electeds and those positions. I was, I, so I look for that, that discrepancy between, oh, we're. Just FYI, we are the twenty-first most populous county in the state of Iowa. So anybody that rates above or below the twenty-first level in payroll. Leads me to believe that either we're under or overpaying somebody, so, and that's not specifically directed at anyone. And in fact, quite frankly, I, I, as I was going through this. I was really rather astounded and encouraged by the prior, uh, boards that, man, we are. We are just about right on the mark. I mean, a county attorney, we're number twenty-one in population, and we're paying twenty-two.
Yep.
So we are right in the mark there. So then that drives home the question of, okay, what are the other counties gonna pay, and, and again, I recognize that different counties have different. Expertise and requirements and those kind of things, but again, some are more and some are less. So I also look at averages, and there's an average, uh, in there as well. So the average pay for, and again, county attorney throughout the state is a hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. For the elected position.
And so this is where, this is kind of, because the situation has changed. They are now, the compensation board now went and looked outside. Um, they now can compare atta- attorneys that are within, you know, whether they're private, whatever, so. The struggle with some of this is, is, and this is some back history. That when we had to do it before, we would have to do like amounts, and we were trying to get it down to a reasonable rate, so. So we were having to do everybody, so sometimes, somebodies would be, I don't remember what Jared's was last year, one percent?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, I don't think it's.
One four seven.
Yeah. It's unreasonable in what he's asking, because, and this is what we're gonna see, we're gonna see some of these have not received hardly anything, including ourselves. Um, because of how we had to handle it.
Sure.
Uh, but I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, it, it, it's a struggle and I don't know what, um, the six percent would put us, but I think roughly with CPI, I think, and that, that's, we had a, we had a sheet done. I can't remember if you have that. Yeah.
COLA is two and a half percent.
Yeah.
Cost of living adjustment for social security is two and a half percent.
Yeah. So I think with his, and then we call, yeah, we did the, yeah, yeah. I think it was right there.
And again, I'm just trying to make the suggestion that whether you're an elected or, um, or not, a, a regular hired employee, we need to make sure that we keep things in perspective. And, and, uh, if the rest of the counties are also going up six percent, then I'm the first one in that line saying, okay, let's stay in that, in that position to make sure that we're, you know, we're paying for the appropriate amount for that position. And, and that's all I'm saying. Now whether that's plus six percent or plus three percent, I don't know.
So there was, um, so for shore work, um, on our portion.
Excuse me.
Um, do you need some water? Are you okay? Because you've been hanging out with us for so long. Um, we, I had Lisa do what we typically, um, did. And this is what our shore work was because we weren't able to meet prior to, to discuss. You okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Unless they fall out of the chair.
Right. So looking at a three percent increase, um, for the salaries down. And this would keep, you know, he's, he's actually asking for a little less at a three percent. So with the CPA, so that's just keeping him at that twenty-first percentile is, is how I read that if I'm, if I'm reading that correctly.
Well, that's a total increase of almost seventy percent. Because you're doing the CPI plus.
Right, you're doing the CPI, yeah, just to keep, uh, to making sure that they're, so, yeah.
The COLA includes everything.
Yeah, it is. Yep, yep, it does. You're right. Yep. So. So, I've.
Recognizing the difficulty that we all have, I'm still more comfortable with the three percent for the electeds, just like we were with everybody else.
And, uh, we'd have to know a little bit where, where we're thinking that with just a three percent overall. I don't know if we can bring that up. We probably don't have that. Do we? I don't have a.
I had to super, over, well, I mean, as far as dollar now.
I didn't create that work this year. That's fine.
We could.
I have this sheet, but we're not including.
You don't want to include.
The CPI. Yeah, yeah.
And again, I, I'm one guy out of, one person, one vote out of three. So some rest of you guys feel strongly another way.
Well, this is, this is the struggle. I'm just, I, I gotta be, I gotta be honest. The struggle with it is, is he, he's got a one percent last year. I'm just trying to make up for a little bit of that. Um, you can all. Yeah. It's, this, yeah, it's been difficult, but okay. Sorry, I didn't know if you had something you wanted to say.
I tried to put myself in line with like counties. I think that averaging the county attorney salary throughout the state can give you some, um, really interesting results that aren't accurate. Because all county attorney's offices are not created equally. And that's not a comment on, you know, the other county attorneys, I'm just talking about what their offices do, the amount of volume that they have. The law enforcement in the county we have here is very good and creates a lot of work for us. And that, I think those things are incredibly important to take care of, especially when you talk about, you know, our office with the collections program and some of the other things that we do. I think it's dangerous to try to lump all the county attorney's offices together. Um, I try to give the board, um, like county attorney's offices. And those are obviously pre, uh, board meetings for all those offices. So some have gone up, you know, Jasper County Attorney got a good raise. Um, and I think that, you know, given what happened last year, my thinking was I want to get back in line with a steady growth. And that's why I proposed the six percent. And I think it's more than fair.
Um, I'll, I'll add on to Jared's comment there. Um, I think the county attorney does a fabulous job. I'm not going to comment online as the sheriff, but I will comment on everybody else's. Um, the Iowa legislature allowed Board of Supervisors to either comp boards, keep comp boards or get rid of comp boards. So these are peers, I mean, people that make up that comp board. So if you aren't going to kind of go with the recommendations that they have, why have a comp board? I mean, you don't have to have a comp board and then it's left up to you directly. But I mean, a six percent for the county attorney, I think is more than fair. I, I wish the comp board would hire for him on it. I mean, on different things, but I guess if, can you just answer that? Why? If, if we aren't going to go with what the comp board talks about and the law allows you to get rid of the comp board, why don't we just get rid of it?
I was not, uh, a party to the decision to have a comp board. I wasn't on, I wasn't sitting at this table at that point. And I won't talk about or comment on what may or may not happen in the future. And I can only comment upon and try to manage the expenses and the amount of assets that were allocated by the legislatures and try to make sure that we divvy it out for the best possible result. No matter what the department is. And, and hopefully that's coming through to everybody that, yeah, I, I'd, I'd rather be wearing a big red hat and hand out cash.
And I, and I get that. I think, um, there just has been a, a struggle with, um, the last several few years that, that, so we had been giving raises across the board anywhere from a five, a six, you know, um, to the general, um, employees. The electeds have not except, um, Jason maybe had, has received, uh, he, he received a few years there, um, a significant raise. But, um, overall, and, and it's just the way the code was written. To me, this would not be setting a precedence if this is what it's going to be year after year. Uh, but we do have a little bit of a situation, um, where it is lagged behind and you're going to find where, um, you have some that are on there, not all, but you have some that are making, that are electeds, that are making, um, less than some department heads, um, that are managing more and, um, electeds are managing more people. And you've got elect, and then you've got people that are, you know, that are being hired at a higher rate. And it's because, you know, they've got their boards and the board sets that. So it's, this is, this is a real struggle. It really is. And, and when I say I'm looking at some of these raises, I'm looking at this as a one time. I, I don't know that we can continue, um, I don't know that we can continue on, you know, doing, uh, like with Jared, a six percent, you know, type of things. But, um, yeah. So, and then there's, um, you know, there's going to be other department heads that, you know, don't receive as much and, and, and that's, and, but then there's times where some of those people, um, it's a give and take. Like, you know what I mean? Like, like I said last year, I'm not trying to repeat, but just trying to be mindful. Those years that some of those employees, and we're not going to make everybody happy. People out there that got five and six percent and maybe an eight percent, but they're only getting a three percent this year. I get it. But those electeds, they didn't get that. So anyways.
Can I, can I explain what's on the screen?
That's fair. I, I, I get that. I understand that. That's, yeah.
Can I explain what's on the screen? This is the, I think this is what you were looking at, Keisha. Is that correct? So in the past, again, past.
A comp board, this, yeah, this is this.
This is what, um, for years, dating back, I don't know how far, um, they would, we would put the present, they would put the present, uh, present salary, what the salary is at the twenty-first rank or whatever rank we are. We were twenty-second, now we're twenty-first. What that variance was. They would add CPI and then they would say, okay, we're going to give a straight three percent. Here's what that equates to, and here's the dollar amount. So this is the worksheet, I think that the board in the past is used to working off of because it, it showed the, it showed your work, Keisha, to your point, that this is kind of where they went in line. So if you want, you know, you tell me what you want to see, if you want to see something. Um, I, I have to leave at noon, so I apologize. I can let, uh, Lindsay take over my spreadsheet.
What you're trying to say, I think, was all the other elected officials were, our hands were tied on what salaries we could give them based on the formula that we had to work with in the old compensation law. So are you saying, Keisha, we want to try to make some of that up now for one time deal?
Yeah, I'm looking at trying to make some of that up and then we're going to have to reevaluate. See what we can do. Because in the budget currently, it is all included. I mean, they put their salaries at what the compensation board recommended because that's what the compensation board recommended.
I don't think, I think what Keisha's saying, probably not three percent, probably going to be.
Yeah, I'm looking at more. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at more. And this is, and, and, and this is, is, is why, is just because we've got to.
Just to make up for.
Disparity a little bit and we've got to try to make up that, um, a little bit. So.
I do have to admit, when I was going through and I was looking at historical increases, last year was astounding to me that, I mean, Jared, I saw it was one point four seven percent. I, and I did make notice to that and there was some of the other electeds that basically it was not much.
Yeah.
So, and, and please don't misunderstand. I absolutely value the service that you provide and everything that you do for the county and, and everybody here.
And, and we respect, I, I respect what you're saying. I really do. I understand. This is, this is the part that keeps me up at night. But I'm also trying to say, okay, how, I mean, how do we curb, how do we curb some of this? But it has gotten out of, it has gotten out of whack and.
I too would like to make up for lost time that when our hands were tied, but I'm not sure what number to throw out there.
So the county attorney, I mean, honestly, I'm okay with the six percent.
Mm-hmm.
And, and where he's at. I'm just gonna, I'm just, you know, gonna speak about that. And we can talk about each one a little bit. Um, I don't know which one was next in line. Um,
Oh, you can unshare me.
Here.
Okay. So, yeah, um, so, yeah. So attorney, and then we went to the auditor. Okay. Jake, close your ears, buddy. Um, Jake is a glue that I said yesterday that if we lose Jake, we all would be scrambling. Okay? Um, Jake has been here twenty, twenty-five, twenty, I don't know how many, twenty-nine, I don't know how many, thirty years. I don't remember how many years. Yeah. Uh, he has a wealth of knowledge. Um, Jake is not going to be, you know, probably wanting to work forever and I, and I, and I understand that. Um, but when we're hiring, um, and Kale, no offense to you, don't, don't take this, but when we're hiring an assessor, a kale, um, a conservation person, and you know, we're hiring these people at a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, you know, we're hiring other department heads at, you know, ninety-two, ninety-five, I mean, and Jake is an eighty-nine. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to be frank. I want to get Jake to a hundred thousand dollars. And if that's going to floor anybody, it's going to floor anybody. But he, he needs it. Um, he's, he's to a point where he's, um, I can't give you everything you ask, but it is something that he's very vital. And in the position in which he has, I think it's worth it.
So do, do we have to do this by percentage? Can we do it by a dollar amount?
I've got a percentage.
Oh, you got a percentage?
That's twelve and a half percent.
Uh, mine didn't, my percentage didn't go quite that high.
That's fine. You can come up with that. That's, and I, and this is why I'm just speaking on behalf. Okay? I'm just gonna, I'm just putting it out there. Um, the recorder, um, again, uh, Naomi, what did you get last year? What, what was your guys' increase? Yeah. So the both, both were significant, both treasurer too, significant. Um, I'm more in the lines of a ten percent for them. So that would put them about ninety-four and ninety-five. And then we have the sheriff. Um, sheriff, um, I was looking at a five percent for you. And this is why I think that, uh, we have been able to give you significant raises. Um, that would put you at right at about one, not at, right at about one forty-three, um, one forty-two, nine twenty-five. Um, that's roughly a little bit difference between, um, that and the, um, attorney. But, um, and that wasn't, I'm not slight, I'm not trying to slight you in any way. I'm trying to make so that we, we have some increases that we need to look at. And I do think that we have given some significant increases in, in what you, um, you have received. And I do know that we, you have at times been saying, you know, hey, last year you wanted to give it to your department, which I appreciate that. Um, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at. And am I going to be looking at doing these huge raises next year? No, that's not what I was looking at. But I'm showing my cards because I want to move the process along and I'm willing to hear from the other two.
So you're twelve percent with Jake?
Twelve and a half, yeah.
Well.
So it was three for us, which we're at zero, be five for the sheriff, six for the county attorney, auditor twelve and a half, recorder ten, and treasurer ten. Total being would have been roughly at forty-five thousand, which minus us thirteen, so it's like forty-four thousand. That does not, the, that does not put in comparison to what it affects for the sheriff's department and, or those electeds, that their deputies.
We're getting nothing.
We're getting nothing.
You get to hang out with me, Steve.
Gee, thanks. Well, I totally agree. Trying to make up some of this lost time with the other electeds. I, I, I struggle with that every year when we had to do that. Because everybody got, everybody got hurt. Well, it's, it's considerably better than three percent. I agree with that.
Yeah. And it's going to make, I mean, it's going to make them, some of the employees upset. I get that. But those employees, um, have several years gotten that five percent and, and, and our electeds haven't.
I get it.
And this is the struggle. It really is. And, um, it's becoming, there's a disparity between the difference. So.
Well, I think that's fair. I'm good with that.
I'll defer, have, being the new guy on the, being the newbie. I think there's a I completely understand and can appreciate trying to make up ground for, um, apparently what we missed out on in prior years. But again, I will also forecast a, a bit of a warning is the storm clouds are brewing, folks. We just, we don't print money.
We don't. You're right. That's, it is, it's a struggle.
So, you know, for as tight as this budget process was.
Yep.
And again, I'm not suggesting that we do this at anybody else, any individual's expense. I'm just saying in general terms, from a county perspective, we got to find some relief somewhere, either more income or less expense. And we all, I mean, uh, and they're both difficult answers.
And there may be times to come where there's zero.
It may be zero next year.
You don't know. I mean, we don't. And that's the thing. And so, I mean, it is, it is a real struggle. Um.
I sure as heck don't want to sit up here and have to tell people that they got to reduce their staff.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we're not going to make everybody happy.
Oh.
I'll agree to your recommendation.
Okay.
So do you need me to tell you that again?
Um, probably.
Twenty percent for supervisors.
Zero for supervisors. Okay?
I had twenty.
That one's easy to remember.
Uh, five percent for the sheriff. Attorney, six percent. Auditor, twelve and a half. Recorder, ten. Treasurer, ten. Do you need me to tell you the amounts that I'm looking at?
So we're doing, but, I mean, just so we all come to the same math at the end, because everybody will just readjust and all. Percent, that percentage times current salary is the.
percent, that percentage times current salary is the new salary. So you kind of went through all the departments and the comp board, maybe a motion for that, that whole thing. That, that makes sense?
Yep.
And then you'll be to levies?
Yep, to levy, yep. Entertain a motion to, um, as, uh, board as recommended. And the departments, as we discussed, so.
So moved.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
I think what, I think what we'll do is we'll try and assess, um, what departments have changes and, um, between the worksheet, I thi- I think, I think we'll keep the worksheet locked, uh, available to view but locked. And I'll try to send maybe a paper copy with version number one on it. So if you have, if departments have changes to make, please, um, pencil in all your changes for that and, uh, then get it back to me. And we'll be starting, we'll try and get these out tomorrow. Um, I think that's where we'll land. If that's okay, and I didn't mean to jump in your game, but just so people know, I think that's maybe how we'll attack it. And then we'll coordinate with Lindsay on getting the worksheets updated as you guys submit, so you can see that as well. And then we'll send out drafts so everybody can see.
Thank you, Jake. Um, on to levies. Uh, we don't really have, um, much that we can change other than, um, board, would you like to look at general supplemental? I think it's wise that we do look at general supplemental.
The fund too.
Yeah, that's fun too. Um, you know, we've, we have, we're going to take the lost, um, twenty percent and adding to that. I think that we look at the levy and, um, I, I'm looking at a five cent increase, which would give us another hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and four dollars.
Which one?
It would be this, sorry, it's, so I'm looking at the cash balance, but I'm looking, if, but
I'm looking at
They're all cheap.
You want, you want the cash flow? So, that five cents.
Currently it's two point zero zero one zero seven. Can that be two point zero five?
Yeah.
Even?
Even.
I was thinking you'd buy it.
I, I'm, I kind of, I hesitate go, increasing it that much. Um, I just was hoping that maybe seeing what the offset is and then going from there and that would hopefully get that fund balance. Even if we took, if they spent everything, that would at least get us up to that million dollars in that fund.
And not knowing what they're gonna do with seven eighteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, five?
Five cents.
Well, actually, it would be, yeah, oh, five. Is that okay? Rounded, rounded?
Yeah, just two, yeah. So it'd be a little, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a little bit less than
Little bit less, not actually.
So the levy overall was down a, was down a penny. So it would increase the levy by four cents.
Yeah, yeah, entertain a motion to
No, let's do the levies first.
I'm all queued up. We're six minutes behind.
Right. So, entertain a motion to, uh, set the levies, um, as presented, other than changing a general supplemental to two dollars and five cents. So that would, right?
Yep.
Do I have to do say anything else that you want to? All right. So entertain that motion as, as I just stated.
Okay, so it's two point
Five.
Oh, five. Two oh five, two point oh five. Okay, all right.
And then the general fund will be at the max allowed, uh, that we spoke, that, um, and, uh, of Fund eleven, World Services will be at the max allowed. Um, three ninety-one, I think it is. And then the debt service is, um, uh, at the level, uh, taking, um, reducing by whatever outside sources from TIFs and the grant. And that grant runs out next year. So that could be a potential substantial levy increase. We have a motion. So I, that was your motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
My apologies.
Our brains are
Mueller?
Yes.
Johnor?
Aye.
McCombs? Aye.
Thank you. My apologies.
One quick thing, um, I just wanna make sure, um, we're close. I'm not gonna take very long. I wanna thank you, Jason. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's not, I know, right? We appreciate you, Steve. Um, thank you, the board. Thank you, Jake, our clerk. Appreciate you.
Thanks for putting up with us, Jim.
I, this is my first time through and I've learned a lot. I have to admit, it's
Thank you, department heads. Thank you, staff. We couldn't be here without you. So we do appreciate all of you. Um, this job isn't easy. It stinks. Gonna be, just gonna be frank. Um, some of you are probably disappointed. Some of you may be, okay, I don't know. Um, but please remember, um, we try to do our best. You know, we really do. I think you, you're seeing that. And, um, and we're in the day where companies are laying off. There's cities, there's, that are cutting budgets. There's schools that are cutting budgets, cutting positions. I'm thankful that majority of them, we could give three percent and no, um, increase in insurance. And, um, I appreciate you guys. And so, that's it. Oh, you have any words? I just
Yes. Jake? This is my colleagues that put me in the poorhouse. I expect the cash flow.
Not on record. See how we
I'm not sure what that means. So You gotta take care of Steve. Would you please adjourn?
All right.
I, I move with you, Jared.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. See you next week.